I know. All right, well, welcome to the February 15th meeting of the Eureka City Council. This is our third meeting this month in a very short month. And I would like to start today by reading the land acknowledgement because I haven't done that yet this month. So, "The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jaru Gigi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land, and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism." And then I will start the meeting now with a roll call. Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Castellana?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Bergel?
Here.
All right, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Hold on just a second. Excellent, so we are going to start the mayor's announcements tonight with a proclamation for National Black History Month, and Councilmember Arroyo is going to read that for us.
I sincerely apologize, it is not coming up for me, so could I pass that to someone else?
Councilmember Bergel, would you like to read? Do we have anyone here to receive?
We do, we have Barquet Brown from Fogbreak and his team.
Wonderful, all right, well, thank you for being here. This is the City of Eureka Proclamation in recognition of February's Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements of African Americans at a time for recognizing the central role of blacks in U.S. history, and whereas Black History Month began in 1915, half a century after the 13th Amendment abolished slavery in the United States, and emerged out of a Negro History Week, and whereas many black Americans lived, toiled, and died in obscurity, never achieving the recognition those individuals deserved, and yet paved the way for future generations to succeed, and whereas Black History Month is also an occasion to commemorate the countless contributions of African Americans, many of whom lived through and surmounted the scourge of segregation, racial prejudice, and discrimination to enrich every fiber of American life, and whereas the fabric of our nation is richer and stronger due to the significant influence and contributions of inspirational African-American leaders, and we celebrate the contributions of those individuals who thrive throughout history, making unforgettable positive changes in Eureka as artists, educators, businesspeople, influential thinkers, and political and governmental leaders. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Eureka does hereby proclaim February as Black History Month, and encourages all residents to join us in celebrating this special month." And I would like to invite Barquet Brown from, he's the lead facilitator from Fogbreak, who's been working with the City of Eureka for the past year or two, I don't know, COVID time, sometime within COVID. Do you have anything to say? Thank you.
Absolutely. Hello, everybody. We just want to thank the mayor and the City of Eureka for just acknowledging and honoring the work that's being done, and we at Fogbreak Justice are truly here to move the needle towards creating a more deeply engaged, inclusive, just, and equitable society, and to acknowledge the past, but at the same time really, truly work to make a better future for all of us. Because if we increase inclusion and that sense of belonging, then everybody wins, and that's ultimately what we're here to do, and we are grateful to be a part of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for the great work that you have been doing with the city. Do you have other folks from your team with you? You want to introduce them?
All right, I believe it's just me representing for the team right now.
That's perfectly fine.
Shanti and Christie, who are dedicated, Joshua as well, who are very dedicated to this cause. They send their thanks for the acknowledgement as well, and are just proud to be a part of this effort at Eureka.
Thank you so much. Thank you for receiving this, and we will see you soon.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye. Now I'm going to back up a little bit, because as I am prone to do, I did forget to report the closed out, ask for a report out of closed session, so Mr. City Attorney, do you have a report out for us?
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers, no final actions were taken in closed session.
Thank you. But on the note, that's the last time I will forget it for you, since this is going to be your last official meeting as the city attorney, you're going to be leaving, but not permanently, you're going to be out helping our new city attorney, Autumn Luna, and you're going to enjoy some much deserved respite. I don't know how you're going to fill your days.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and my time with the City of Eureka has been some of the most rewarding years of my 45-year career as an attorney, and I have really enjoyed it. I really enjoy the progressivism and the community spirit that exemplifies Eureka, and thank you, thank you, thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Well, you've had quite a career, starting as a city councilperson yourself, I believe.
That is true.
Yeah, so a whole lifetime of public service, and now you get to enjoy some fun and relaxation, and still, we'll keep you on the hook.
Yeah, I certainly hope so.
And I'm sure we'll do something more formal than this, too, as you leave. Thank you so much. Bob Zima, want to say anything to? Councilmember Arroyo?
I didn't prepare anything, but this is just going to be from the heart. Bob, it's been such a joy having you on the team, and I know that it's one thing to have an attorney who's a competent attorney, and it's another to really have someone who feels like they're looking out for the interests of the city and the council, and proactive in the way that they do that, and helping, really helping the staff accomplish goals, and do that in a legal and effective way. So, in addition to really being a proactive and helpful part of our team, I know that it's just been such a joy getting to know you, and I know you live in Del Norte County, but spend all this time in Eureka, and are really committed to the communities of the North Coast, and I know you and your wife have enjoyed spending time here and going to community events, and it's just been so cool to be out and about and see you there, and to realize that you're really part of the fabric of our community. And I will miss your dapper outfits, but I'm sure Autumn...
I think I'm missing them, too.
You're just going to be wearing Hawaiian shorts and relaxing by the river these days. No, I imagine that we'll continue seeing more of you, and thank you for really bringing Autumn into the mix, too, as a previous deputy, and now she is well positioned to step into this role, so thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Councilmember Castellana?
I also didn't prepare anything to say, but I'll miss you, and yeah, I just appreciate your thoughtfulness and diligence and attention to detail, and your compassion for humanity, and I've learned a lot from you about law and cities and governance, and so I really appreciate that, and I'll carry that with me forever, so thanks, Bob, and thanks for, you know, all the people you've touched over the years, and all of the cities you've kind of helped shepherd along the way. I'm glad we were a part of it.
Councilmember Bergel?
Bob, boy, we are going to miss you. You have been such a delight and asset to our city, and I've so loved working with you, just, it's been really enjoyable, and, you know, you do, you have you have a good balance, because you're very compassionate, and you're very that, but you're also very like, let's get this done. And there's just so much that I appreciate about you, and I'm going to miss you a lot. I look forward to Autumn coming, she's going to be great, too, but she's, you know, and we'll adjust, you know, but you'll certainly always be with, because you're part of the team. And when we, yeah, and I've never been with a city attorney that was part of the team, so I really like that, or any attorney that's been part of the team, how's that? That's probably better to say. Anyway, just know that you're so appreciated. I'm going to miss you a lot.
Thank you. Well, as you know, I am continuing under contract as a deputy city attorney, and subject to Autumn reaching out and seeking my assistance on specific projects and subject matters, et cetera, so I don't feel like I'm leaving, I feel like I'm stepping back and letting new blood take over, and I just, I can't tell you how pleased I am that Autumn was willing to do it. That was kind of my agenda from day one, when we came in on almost like a job-share basis, that eventually she would become the city attorney, and then she took a little deviation along the way, but that was good for her, and something she needed to do, and I think it probably better prepared her to step up, so. Yeah, it's a really, really good outcome.
So this isn't goodbye, it's just...
It's not goodbye.
It's just we don't have, you're just not going to be able to remind me about the report out of closed session every time, so I'm sure you're going to miss that.
I'm going to mention that specifically to Autumn when we do the handoff.
You probably should. Other news for my mayor's report. I attended the two-by-two city schools meeting with Councilmember Moulton, so I'll let her talk about some of the stuff happening at Jacobs, because that's in her ward, but I did want to mention, one of the things we talked about was their CTE program. At that time, the Samoa Beach Academy was being looked at by Humboldt County Office of Education, and their charter was not approved. But the CTE trades programs, electrical, construction, automotive, at Eureka City Schools has just really grown so much in the last few years, and if you're not familiar with what's happening there and you're interested in it, I highly recommend reaching out, because it's very cool, the stuff that they're doing, and I don't think enough people know about that. The other thing that we talked about that was of interest to me was there's a lot of funding for Universal Preschool, which is a lot of times seen as a TK program, so it's kind of a pre-kindergarten program, and they're not seeing a lot of registrations. Part of that could be because of COVID, and people just aren't ready to send their kids to school under these circumstances, but it could simply be that they don't understand that it's available. So if you have kids that are especially, maybe next year are going to be going in preschool age, looking at kindergarten in a year or two, you should reach out to Eureka City Schools or any of our local city schools, and find out if they have a TK program for you, so you could get some childcare, at least during the day, the workday. I also wanted to make note that for much of the county and the state, the mask mandates are going to be lifting tomorrow, and that does not include schools, mass transportation, hospitals, places, congregate living, so homeless shelters, rehabilitation homes. So there are definitely places where you have to continue to wear a mask. The other thing is businesses can at any time require you to wear masks, that is their choice. If they do, I would like to encourage everybody to honor that. If you don't want to utilize those businesses, that's fine, but the people who work there will be honoring what their bosses tell them, and if their bosses say it's time to wear a mask, then they're going to ask customers to do that, so I really want people to remain civil and good residents of Eureka, and support those businesses that can make up their own rules. The other thing is I met with Maggie Kraft from the agency, Area One Agency on Aging, to talk about seniors downsizing, the difficulties of them taking care of their homes. They have a lot of resources there. If you have family members who are struggling to get maintenance done, maybe they're moving to a smaller place, and they don't even know how to begin to get rid of some of their stuff, you can reach out to Area One Agency on Aging, and they have resources for that. And finally, during our housing meeting the other day, I brought up the potential of developing some kind of program for homeowners that would be a DIY club that would allow people to get together who have homes and need to do maintenance to learn how to do projects around their house. So that's just something we're poking around with, and hoping we can get that started, because there's a lot of changing of homes right now, and people who can afford kind of the less expensive homes are definitely going to have a lot of projects to do to them, so. That is my report, and I'm also going to do a minor change to the agenda, because our capital improvement program is not going to be able to be approved tonight, it's simply a presentation, so we're going to move that up to the mayor's report, and I am going to invite Director Gerbien, I believe, or is it somebody else that's going to be presenting the CIP tonight? Is that Jesse?
Yes, ma'am.
Cindy Engineer Willard.
Good evening, everybody, everyone, mayor and council. Tonight I'll be presenting our capital improvement program for 2022, and with that, I want to start off by just expressing appreciation for all the groups, and, you know, City of Eureka team members who contribute to this, whether it's our team in community services, in IT, or with finance and engineering, Public Works. It takes a great deal of effort to put together all the projects and all the grant pursuits, and to bring the funding in and to execute these projects, and it's something that should be mentioned time and time again, because there's a lot of effort and a lot of goodwill and love that goes into bringing these projects to the forefront. With that, I'm going to move over to share my screen. I do want to mention, as Mayor Seaman noted, there's a few projects, the new projects for this given fiscal year have not been able to go through the Planning Commission, as the Planning Commission meeting was canceled due to a technical difficulty, so those are going to be going to the Planning Commission in the next weeks, and then after that, coming back to council for approving of this entire program. So with that, I will share my screen and get the presentation started. All right. Hopefully everyone can see my screen and the cover sheet there. So again, we're here tonight to present the Capital Improvement Program 2022. My name's Jesse Willer, I'm the city engineer in the Engineering Division of Public Works, and we are the main project coordinators for the, bringing the capital improvement program together, though many different groups throughout the city execute projects and do good work here on the project front. What, we'll start off with an overview of our presentation, so what is a capital improvement program? We'll then get into some projects that we've completed recently, give you an update on kind of the state of affairs of capital projects, and then that will include projects that have been completed, and projects that are in process and moving forward currently. And then after that, we'll jump into the five-year look ahead with a focus on this year's new projects that'll be coming to the forefront in fiscal year 22, 23. A capital improvement program like the one we're presenting tonight is largely based on infrastructure, and a city like Eureka has a lot of different infrastructure, and that infrastructure could be pipes in the ground, it could be roads and sidewalks, it could be buildings, it could be a lot of different things, and so that infrastructure ages in time and needs maintenance and upkeep, and a capital improvement program is kind of our way of capturing how the planning and dollars are being allocated towards those projects. Simply defined, a CIP is a short-term plan which identifies capital projects and provides a planning schedule and options to finance the plan. This is a very simple definition, there often can be much more complexities that go into a capital improvement program, but this is generally how it's defined. The purpose of the CIP is to create orderly implementation of the goals of the general plan and strategic vision documents, orderly and timely basis for sound budget decisions, to plan and finance future needs, and to maintain and replace the city's infrastructure. Funding and financing. CIP 2022 presents prioritization of the most vital projects. Short-term projects typically have funding earmarked or in place. Financing schedules are developed based on project phasing and funding availability. The City of Eureka is a historic city, incorporated in 1856, so well over 100 years of age. That means we have a lot of aging infrastructure that is in various levels of condition, from good to very poor, and they need to be understood what those levels are, and how, what the plan is to address those issues. So that's kind of the general overview of a CIP and what it means, I kind of went through that quickly. I know that we've, every year, we kind of go through the same bullet points there, and it's all, that part of it hasn't changed a whole lot. Now we'll get into a few different ways to frame some of the projects that we're going to talk about tonight. Deferred maintenance, so our infrastructure is in constant need of maintenance and upkeep, and sometimes there's insufficient funds, or there's other obstacles to overcome that allow pieces of infrastructure, buildings, roadways, utilities, to be in a poor condition, and that's referred to as deferred maintenance, where it kind of, it can get kicked down the road. So from that, we'll start our delusion to the projects of the City of Eureka, and the intent here is really to provide an update on projects that have been through the CIP in the past, which ones have been completed, and which kind of stages the other, the projects that are currently active or in. Then after that, we'll move into the five-year CIP. The project on the screen is one phase, is a, this is a fiber optic project. This is the water treatment plant fiber optic line that was installed this last summer. It connected the zoo courtyard to the water treatment plant along W Street, and the fiber optic conduit and fiber that was installed in those conduits allows there to be a direct connection between water treatment, Parks Courtyard and the zoo, rather than having a kind of line-of-sight air, you know, radio connection. This allows for a very secure connection that's very robust. There's another photo from that construction, installing conduit underneath the sidewalk along W Street. Our next project is the Water Improvements 2021. This project was completed this last fall. It included installing new water mains and water services on 14th, Eastwood, and O Streets, and valve clusters in additional locations throughout the city. The valve clusters and water mains allow for us to have, replace existing water mains that have a lot of history of breaks, where we have leaks or larger breaks, and then also with the new valve clusters, a higher level of control for the water system in order to help, when we're repairing those breaks or leaks, you can control the distribution network better with working valves, and then also additional valves. Here's one of the crews bolting up a valve cluster, you can see fairly large diameter water main there. The next project on the screen is a Jack and Boar, this is, I believe it's at O Street, this is our sewer improvements 2020. This was a $1.8 million project from the wastewater fund, consisted of spot repairs and trench rehabilitation of almost a mile worth of millimeter feet of sewer mains ranging from six to 16 inches in diameter, as well as manholes and sewer laterals. The photo you're seeing here is a lining of a sewer main. All these projects are generally to either fix broken sewer mains or leaking sewer mains. It's the interesting photo we see here on the screen. This is, this project is the Crosstown Interceptor Maintenance Phase 1. This project did an evaluation of our Crosstown Interceptor, which is our sewer, it's our sewer transmission main that transmits our majority of the sewer from the city along the waterfront to the Elk River Treatment Plant. There's certain sections of this line that we monitor to ensure that they have a good cathodic protection system on there, and we've found some discontinuities in that system, so what you're seeing here is bonding of the, between two sections of pipe in order to create a secure cathodic protection between those segments of pipe. Henderson Center Street Improvements. I'm sure no one in the city noticed any of the implications of what was happening out there on Henderson. I joke, it was very busy summer on Henderson, this street, this last summer. There was a lot of water main, water services, sewer mains, sewer laterals, and fiber optic that were installed underneath the existing Henderson Center, and then, as we got into the fall, we were able to repave or overlay Henderson, fixing a lot of the very rough road that was out there. So that one's been a long time in coming, and now we have a, what was once a very leaky and prone to breaking water main system has been replaced, and some nice new pavement out there also, which was far past its useful life. The Broadway Multimodal Quarter, Broadway Multimodal Quarter Plan. This project was a collaboration between HCOG, the City of Eureka, and Caltrans, and that project was completed back quite a while ago, however, it was in the summer, so it was still this last fiscal year of the plan, and that project now kind of looking to the future with it, that the planning process was completed that looked at Broadway from Herrick Avenue to Fourth and Fifth Street, and now those, some of those project alternatives that came out of the study are in use by Caltrans for planning efforts. There's the South Broadway Multimodal, or Complete Streets Project, which is, has funding through the Caltrans shop, and they're looking at doing improvements that were recommended from the, from this particular plan in that section of Broadway, and then there's also the very early stages, as far as Caltrans is concerned, of the Middle Couplet, which is going to stretch from Truesdale roughly to Fourth and Fifth in this case, and that project is in the very, the early stages of planning and design. You can see some of the overviews from some of the early planning here, looking at some of the alternatives that were presented in the plan, including the Coster Cupless and Couplet, which is on the far right of your screen through the balloon track. There's also some significant modifications with that couplet in mind at Wabash and Nell Norton on the left-hand side. Here you can see a rendering of that same area, Wabash and Del Norte, closest to your screen there. Of course, a lot of vegetation included in the rendering, which looks very nice on a busy Broadway. Another project that was completed this last year that seems like it's been going on for an eternity is the Waterfront Drive G to J Connection. The photo on the screen shows June of 2019, and then the next screen would be April of 2020, where the roadway has connected through, and you can actually drive from one side of waterfront all the way through, which is very nice. The project took a little longer to complete because there was some right-of-way that needed to be worked through, and including a trail connection from Waterfront Drive Sidewalk to the, to the trail behind the Bisc and behind the Adorni Center. So that trail is now in place, and the funding has been, is, the final paperwork has been submitted for that project. is is the final paperwork has been submitted for that project. Our next completed project for this year would be our pavement rehabilitation twenty twenty one, which was just roughly three point five million dollars. This project consisted of rogue rehabilitation and pedestrian improvements through a long list of streets. Here we see E Street. They're grinding it ground out the roadway and they're putting pavement back. Here is I believe this is West Clark Street and that that project got all the gravel, all the pavement was ground out and and base as well. And the whole full depth of the roadway was rebuilt. A similar type of approach was used for the construction of Commercial Street. Here you see that they've gone through and they've ground out all the asphalt and the base material. They'll recompact that and then pave over top of it. It's a great way to reuse the material that's in place and then be able to you know, have project savings and and also resource savings. Our next completed project is the pedestrian crossing improvements for twenty twenty one. This project was roughly one point two million. It was a highway safety improvement program grant funded project. It was in thirty five locations citywide. Here's some of the completed bulb outs that were installed. You can see there's a pedestrian lighted flashing sign there as well as the curb returns that extend the sidewalk out so that it's easier for vehicles to see pedestrians and for pedestrians to see vehicles. Our next project that was completed this last year was our energy storage system project. This project installed battery backups at five sites in the city, the water treatment plant, the high tank site, wastewater treatment plant, Washington Pump Station and Hill Pump Station. These sites had to qualify through the program, which is the state of California's self generation incentive program funds to have all the right. I guess variables in order to receive the funding and be able to have the battery backups installed there. So this is a this was a a great amount of effort that went into getting these installed, not so much from our part, but from the the team at Tesla. And it was about four million dollars worth of infrastructure was installed at these sites to help when there is when power goes out. Or there's, you know, delays in power returning, these battery backup systems can keep these different sites running for long periods of time without having to have diesel powered generators. Or if sites didn't have generation already on on onsite, they it could take the place of having to have new generators installed. This project has also been going on for quite some time. This is the Fourth Street Underground project. This was a project that's funded by Rural Twenty Eight Funds through PG&E. Roughly four million dollars worth of these funds. It was taking the overhead lines that run along Fourth Street from the Sixth Street Bridge into I believe it was P Street around the corner. But as you can see, there was a joint trench conduit was installed to move all those all those above ground transformers and lines underground. And what will remain in the end should be just lights and poles. So that'd take a lot of light clutter or I guess wire clutter down from up above and move it underground. Also creates a much more robust system as far as the electric and communications that were located on those poles. Let's see. So this is a in progress. Now we're going to start our in progress projects. This one is the first slough fish passage floodplain restoration and coastal habitat connectivity project. It's a planning and design funding grant. So it's roughly three hundred thousand dollars of the funds through the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Their Fisheries Restoration Grant Program. Include studies, designs, associated permits and sequel compliance to remove three barriers in the first in the first slough watershed. Those barriers are at Fourteenth Street, N Street and M Street. It's going to open up habitat above Fourteenth Street and above those other crossings. And provide improvements to the channel along the the way there. This channel due to, you know, the years and years of development in the city of Eureka has been impacted pretty heavily by sedimentation. This project will help open up the channel to to for fish to move around and also be able to create a more natural stream bed. And this is the bottom part of firstly there at Myrtle and Eighth that we that the the project to remove the to install a large fish passage covert last year took place. Another large project that's in currently in progress right now is the West Side Flood Reduction Sea Level Rise Mitigation Project. This is a grant funded project through three different grant funding sources. Roughly totaling eight little over eight million dollars in grant funds. It's FEMA, it's FEMA funding FEMA funds. There's Department of Water Resources and CNR, the California Natural Resource Center, well not center, but California Natural Resources funding on the project. So these three grants all help match one another in order to fully fund the project. And it addresses flooding in the Washington Street area as well as some upper parts of two of our the city's largest storm drain basins. It helps with sea level rise mitigation in a number of ways, upsizing some pipes to allow for future sea level rise and incorporates trash capture and LID features into the stormwater system in order to try to intercept trash before it reaches the bay. And infiltrate some of the stormwater that comes down naturally into the ground by removing impervious area and creating LID features. Here you see our team out looking at some of the areas where the where the where the project site is. This is that where the this is where one of the outfalls is located going into the bay. Here's the team and city staff out looking at different locations to place LID features near West Delnor. And then moving on to our next project, Sewer Maintenance twenty twenty one. Project is roughly two million dollars and is currently in the construction phase. This project primarily is looking at lining of of our larger diameter sewer mains that are in the low lying areas of the city. These are the areas that are very low in elevation near in some cases zero or negative elevation below sea level. So what that means is, you know, these are areas we get a lot of infiltration into our sewer system, which impacts the wastewater treatment plant downstream. So this is a a way that you can repair a lot of lineal feet of sewer main and and replace laterals and and do repairs at a reasonable cost. Because having to dig and replace all these mains would be prohibitively expensive. Here's the contractor replacing a manhole in the project. Our next project is the Washington Street Pump Station Upgrade. This project is currently in the bid phase. The existing pumps at Washington are no longer no longer easily serviceable and will be replaced with high efficiency variable frequency drive and pumps. So the pumps that are located at Washington are the same age as the pump station, which is constructed in the eighties. For the most part, our our maintenance crews do a great job of trying to maintain this older infrastructure and they they do run well in a lot of ways. However, they have been failing left and right. And so we've been struggling to get replacement parts and to be able to replace these. So this was a very necessary project. Here's also from Washington, one of the motors removed or the pump removed off the bottom casing. Our next project is the fueling station. The fueling station is located at the Harrison K Tank Farm where the high tanks located. You see a rendering here in front of you that was put together during the design phase. This is a little over a million dollar project that will install roughly twenty five thousand gallons of fuel storage for the city that will allow us to fuel our city fleet during regular times and also when there's any sort of fuel shortage or power outage, it wouldn't allow us to get fuel like we've experienced in the past with power outages. It's anticipated that construction will be completed here in the next couple of months. Here's some photos on the left of them placing that twenty five thousand gallon tank. You can see the hole. And then also the framing for the the small building that'll house the restroom and the controls for the pumps and all the other things that go along with the fueling station. Here's the pad. It's formed up. And I think believe now they're currently working on getting the overhead cover roof installed. Our next project that is currently in progress right now is the settling basins that we have at the water treatment plant. These basins are the first phase is to remove the existing clarifiers at the water treatment facility. And so that's currently what is has been put out to bid and is on the consent agenda today to award that to a contractor to remove that clarifier that have been there unused because this our treatment facility doesn't treat doesn't settle out solids like it has in the past, which it hasn't done for quite some time. So this building is just sat there unused and more of a problem than it is any use to the city. A brief update, we're continuing on our community wide brownfield assessment grant. This area is targeted along the waterfront. We continue to move ahead slowly on moving projects to into the phase one category and hopefully to start to move into some of these projects into phase twos where the hope is to identify potential sites that could be brought back into use, cleaned up and brought back into use through the through the EPA's Brownfield Program. This one's really exciting and it's finally feels like it's 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 here. The Elk River Estuary and Title Marsh Enhancement Project. This is six million dollar project. This project will be going out to bid here in the next in about two months and will be going into construction this season. So you'll see a lot of activity down there off the Herrick Over Crossing. What we have here are two different areas, an area to the north of Elk River and area to the south that create approximately one hundred and fourteen acres of of tidal marsh and and tidlands. And so this this restoration project has been a long time coming. It's really exciting to see it get there. There's also a trail that's located along the rail adjacent to the railroad prism along the outside near the bay that will help kind of be that next phase of trail going to the south as well as connecting to the Humboldt Hill neighborhoods to allow for people to to bike or walk from the Humboldt Hill area to Eureka or vice versa. Still these master plan. We've been working on putting together a facilities master plan with a consultant. Assessments have been completed on all of the locations that we have within the city and now we're looking to identify you know, what the next steps are with those facilities. So we hope to have this plan wrapped up here in the next couple of months and that'll kind of be a guide for necessary improvements to the different city owned facilities that that are across the city. Electric vehicle charging station. This project is located at City Hall and it will be for charging fleet vehicles that should I believe have been ordered and are scheduled to arrive at some point. I know there's been a difficulty in getting those vehicles due to some other hurdles. But the idea is to have charging stations installed here at City Hall in the next, within the next, I would say, six months or less. Payment Rehabilitation twenty twenty two. So this project is in the design phase and we're looking at a large list of streets that will get similar similar treatments to the ones that were last year where we're going to have either some large grind and inlays or rebuilds of roadways or overlays. Intersections and other areas will get repaired. The list of streets is long and we'll kind of touch on them a little bit later in our our next portion of the presentation. There's another section of kind of an over an overview of what that is the area that would be repaired. This is M Street or Fifteenth Street by M between J and M. Another project that's in the works and will be going out to bid this March is the Harrison Avenue Improvements. This project is a project that is funded by Chrisa Funds. And the city is partnering with Humboldt County as this the roadway Harrison is actually half half city and half county down the middle. So we're partnering with them to do improvements to that that section of roadway where the the paving and the sidewalks are in bad repair. So it's a great chance for the city and the county to take care of a roadway that we share. The next project that we have coming and this one's more in the design phase is the multimodal improvements of twenty two twenty three. So generally, this is a large grant funded project roughly four million dollars. It looks at two corridors, the Sixth and Seventh Street Corridor, and then also the H and I Streets Corridors. It's funded by eight chip dollars and it's looking at looking at including corner extensions, buld outs, sidewalk, high visibility crosswalk markings, thermoplastic pedestrian activated rapid flashing beacons, new signage, radar feedback signs. So this is and then additionally, there's the H and I Corridor, which will have a lane will be dedicated from vehicle travel to bicycle traffic through a buffered bike lane, which came from the planning process of the H and I Corridor a couple of years ago. So those funds are going to be going. So the project's in going in design and but isn't slated to go into construction until the following summer. You'll see some of the design on the screen here that came out of that planning that planning session. And that wraps up our in progress section of the presentation tonight. And now we'll transition over to the the actual categories that are in your CIP report and what they what they have inside of them. Our first category is harbor and waterfront. This year, we do not have much in form of project work going on. You can see though that in the coming years, there'll be dredging and improvements to similar boat ranch, the Commercial Street Fueling Facility and Fisherman's Terminal there. The information technology category, we have fiber optic network upgrade coming this next season. And that's really looking at the cities, the city of Eureka backbone for our fiber optic network that would connect critical facilities, city facilities such as City Hall, Police and Fire, Muni and High Tank Facility through a a set of fiber optic conduits and and fiber bundles that would go down Sixth, I, Eleventh, Henderson and K Street. And this this project's funded by ARPA funds. Our next category is land and facilities. This project has few projects in it this particular year. As you can see, the Coast Guard Building Improvements is the one that's listed in twenty two twenty three. Here's a photo of the Coast Guard Building down at the end of Commercial Street. The intent is to have convert the existing building, which was an old Coast Guard barrack into a substation for EPD that will facilitate facilitate the CSET team operations. The funding for this project is come is is from ARPA funding as well. And this one is being had by the Community Services Team. Really neat project that they're working on pulling together. Our next section is Parks and Recreation. We got some very exciting parks and zoo projects to talk about here. So there's improvements to the twenty thirty park, which I think is have been are well known out there as far as this project. A very substantial grant was acquired to make improvements to both the Jacob Haney Ball Field and also the twenty thirty park, including, you know, new volleyball courts, hockey courts, basketball courts, pickleball, tennis courts, playgrounds for different age groups and fitness stations, as well as improvements at the ball field to renovate bleachers and dugouts, adding a near gation and park improvements. So just a really great project there at the twenty thirty park. Another park improvement is over at Ross Park where new playground facilities are being installed. So that's going to be really exciting for that neighborhood to have those new playground facilities installed there. Improvements at Highland Park would be to replace existing restrooms shown here, which I don't know why. Why would we want to replace these? They look very inviting. But yeah, those will be replaced with new restrooms. New fencing will also be installed at Highland Park as well as doing tennis court resurfacing. So some some really nice updates to those parks there. And again, our community service team is doing an amazing job of going after grant funding and implementing these projects. So great job, guys. Another project, this is outside of the last one, of course, was park improvement. So this is Zoo Master Plan Improvements and this is the Bear and Coyote. Exhibit. So this project is they're getting ready to. Move ahead with notice to proceed shortly. But these renderings kind of give you an idea of what it might look like there with the bear and coyote exhibit down below some elevated walkways in the redwoods. Really exciting addition to the zoo there. And again, that the community services and zoo team working, working, doing a great job of really going after some great projects. Our next section, the streets and storm drains. Category. See, we have a number of projects to touch on here for this coming year. Street maintenance. Every year we do street maintenance and it has become much more of a project than it has in the past. And that's all due to measure H. The the screen you're seeing here shows a number of years in the past where we have had. Very limited amount of dollars going towards doing repairs to our streets, 209,000 in 1718. A little over 900,000 in 1819. And a couple of years where known funds were were spent. They were being saved up for a larger project because that's kind of when you don't have a lot of funding going towards. Project development like this, you have to save it up so you can have a larger project to be put out on the street. So then you look at what we've accomplished in this last year with putting projects on the ground. And while we had some additional funds through STIP. And through some PG&E contributions for projects that they already had in the city, we we see almost four million dollars worth of projects. That were put out in this last summer and a long list of streets throughout the city that were in dire need of getting some attention. So that's really exciting. I know we've that we've talked about it to council an awful lot, but it's it's something once you start seeing those those streets get repaired and hit the road, it's really something that's that's great to see. Because we were losing a lot of those streets and now we're able to kind of start anew and really work on putting together a long list of. Streets that are going to be in good condition for a long time. So looking ahead, this is a list of streets that are anticipated to. Get some love this next summer. A lot of that depends on how our bid prices come out. We've had. With the cost of oil and propane, there's been a big sharp increase in the cost of paving. So that's something we'll be watching to track budgets and how these projects might. Be bid and how much work we'll actually be able to do for the money we have. But you see here again, a nice long list of streets and sections of streets that will be. Looked at and and be repaired in the coming year. We're going to roll through the next five years of projects as well. Again, a good long list of streets here. Where we're looking at doing significant repairs, whether that's full restoration or overlays or grinding inlays. 2024 and 2025. And 2026. So our next project that we're going to talk about is safety improvements. And we talked about a little bit before it's in design, it's captured in the in the. In the project sheet this year because we have both design money being allocated from grant funds and then also in the next year. Construction dollars being allocated. So I won't spend a lot of time because we already talked about these. But again, this is. Sixth and Seventh where you see here an intersection of 16K where improvements are included to do curb returns or curb extensions. Lighted crossing signs and some additional bike lane striping and other striping and signage to help make this roadway safer. H and I corridor, again, the H and I corridor. We already talked about this project as well. Again, it's noted in the CIP because dollars are going to be allocated through those grant funds for designing construction in the next two years. So this again is the West Side Sea Level Rise and Climate Change Adaptation Project. And then our next project after that is sidewalk repairs. This is a smaller project where we look at sidewalks typically adjacent to city facilities that need to be repaired. That the city is responsible for repairing. We have a contractor come out and do minor repairs such as grinding sidewalk ledges down or actually replacing curb and sidewalk or curb returns as necessary. Parking improvements. This is a parking fund funded projects that help maintain existing city parking lots. Here you see micro surfacing or slurry ceiling of parking lots and striping. Those are. Those are typically the dollars that are spent here, but they could be also for parking meters or other improvements to these city lots. Electric vehicle charging stations. We talked about the one that's in process currently at City Hall. This particular project in the CIP is for. Charging stations at other city facilities, not at City Hall, but the intent here is to continue to incorporate charging stations out into the the city parking. Lots or areas that there that the the public would be able to access them and be able to charge or additionally at areas where the city fleet would need charging. So that's that's what this project is in here and the intent is to try to get a couple of these out each year. Or as funding dictates. Our next section is water supply. We have a few projects to touch on here. Water distribution, our water distribution project this year will be primarily a large portion of valve clusters. We have a long list of valve clusters or valves that are non operable or missing. Pieces as far as like not having all four of the legs of the valve cluster with the valve cluster. So. We're going to do some improvements here. This will really help with emergency shutdowns when there's a main break. Where you you can't shut a valve. Now you'll be able to shut those valves and be able to isolate those leaks much quicker. Which will lead to less service interruption for the for the rate payers. Our next project has to do with our with two of our water supply tanks, the low tank, which is a one million gallon tank. And then the Lumber Hills tank, which is a half million gallon tank. There was a visual inspection that was conducted in 2018 where divers got inside the tanks and they do a visual inspection and rate the condition of the coatings on the inside and the exterior of the tanks. And through those reports, we've found necessary coating repairs that need to take place. So that's what this particular project is and hope is to have this one completed later this summer. Lumber Hills backup generator and fire booster pump replacement. The photo you see there is the interior of the Lumber Hills Station. The fire pump, well, the first of all lacks a backup generator. So if there is power outage, that is a that is an issue when it comes to keeping water supply to that particular part to the Lumber Hills area of the city. And additionally, the booster fire pump is a diesel run pump and has has number of issues. Given its age and and how it works. So the intent is to try to up upgrade that diesel powered fire pump with something more modern and efficient. As well as include a backup generator. This one's fairly exciting. This is installation of a solar array at the water treatment plant on the existing 20 million gallon reservoir. It wouldn't be across the entire reservoir, but on a portion of it to meet the needs of the water treatment plant and all its pumps and and power needs as well as. The zoo and Parks Scorp Yard. So we're going to be able to intertie these sites together and to be able to use the power from the the sun there to help. Power or offset some of our uses at these particular sites. So that's a really exciting project. We should. It sounds like we should be going to the the CEC Commission later this week for approval of that application. Waste water. So we always have a lot of projects to talk about in wastewater and they're always very expensive. So. Waste water collection system. Well, let's take a moment and just kind of recap what we have for the wastewater system. We have the Elk River Treatment Plant, which is thirty. No, it's more than 37 years old now, but typically useful life for a wastewater treatment plant is about 50 years and that's based on the the concrete that those. Facilities are made out of our, there's a lot of other mechanical and electrical systems that fail much more quickly. And that's what we see as one of our biggest needs for the Elk River Treatment Plant. Is the replacement of those. A lot of those that infrastructure at the treatment plant. Here we have the sewer improvements 2022. This is sewer maintenance project I was mentioning from the main just a moment ago. This will is an annual sewage collection system repair project where we look at lining or replacing damaged sewer mains and laterals. We'll continue pump station upgrade work, not only that the Washington Pump Station, which was in process now, but also the Hill Street Pump Station and McCollum's Pump Stations, which are. All of the same vintage as the Washington. So all those pumps are in. Various degrees of having to have work done on them and having an issue with getting parts and everything we need to keep everything up and running there. And they. Though between those three pump station, that moves the majority of the sewer sewage that comes out of the city of Eureka to the Elk River Treatment Plant. Enclosed basin estuary compliance is listed on this sheet as well. And that's in large part, the the Elk River Estuary or Title Marsh Enhancement and Estuary Project. So that one we've already spoken about, but that's what that line item is there for as far as city funding to go towards. Repairing this as well as matching to the grant funds that are already incorporated in the project. And finally, from the wastewater treatment facility, the secondary clarifier maintenance phase two. So we've gone in and replaced the. The center drives already and the catwalks that go out to the center drives. And the next phase is to replace the launders and the supporting. Arms that go out to the launders that help modulate the flow and keep everything working well there. This project will be a dry weather project as we have to take an entire clarifier down and be only running off of one in order to do the improvements. So this is a a project where we see the, you know, the harsh conditions, the wastewater treatment plant really having effect on the infrastructure. As well as the weather and and then have the close proximity to the the bay there with rust and corrosion. So now we'll kind of transition into talking a little bit about funding and I. We're getting very close to the end of the presentation. I'm sure you're all very excited for that. I know I am. But we'll talk a little bit about funding. The first part of the funding we're going to talk about is wastewater funding. So what you'll see here is a bar chart that shows what the the last rate study that was put together for the city in 2017. And what it projected in blue, those are what the blue bars are, is what capital projections were per year. What's expected to go towards capital projects. Based on that rate study and the rates that came out of it. So we should be operating under those rates and roughly, you know, you would hope that we'd be bringing in that revenue in order to fund capital improvements. What you're seeing is in the first year 2223, the city making an effort to try to make sure that our project budgets match up with the anticipated. Revenue coming in for the wastewater fund for capital projects. What you see going forward with. Twenty three, twenty four, twenty five and twenty six is the need of our different wastewater infrastructure, whether it's in the collection system or at the wastewater treatment plant. And as you can see, there's a big disparity between, you know, what the rate study predicted or accounted for with rates and the revenue that it brought in versus what the. Construction needs are out there in the collection system and the wastewater treatment plant. So that's a. That's an issue in that, you know, we have, well, one thing we have that's not an issue is we're doing another rate study because it's time for us to do that and we'll be looking at these rates. One thing that seems to be apparent is that there may not be an ability to increase rates to a level that would account for the the disparity that you're seeing here between the. The rate study and the the capital projects. So there may need to be, whether that's with the wastewater treatment plant. And improvements there due to our permit compliance with the regional board. Or other large projects where there has to be some other form of funding brought in, whether that's a loan or bonding to help offset. To to fill the gap for that funding imbalance. The current status at the wastewater treatment plant is really difficult to put your finger on, given that we are going through this permit cycle with the regional board and it's unclear. What they what the expectations are from the board as to what the the levels of change that need to happen at the treatment plant. So it's 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 uncertain. These numbers are what you're seeing here could be could be higher. Towards the the later years as well, just depending on what comes out of our our the permit that we're going through right now with the regional board. So next, we'll just kind of do a little overview. Last couple of slides of the project category funding. As you can see here. This is CIP 2022 CIP by project category. So our larger project categories are wastewater in the dark blue on the right. Twenty nine percent, streets and storm drain projects at 36% on the left and water supply projects to the upper center 22%. And then our other categories, much smaller, whether it's parks and recreation, land and facilities, information technology and harbor and waterfront. So this is just for. The 202223 fiscal year and what's represented in those lines in those tables. Our next pie chart here shows CIP 2022 by fund group. So you can see the. Water, streets and grants are and wastewater, those are largest contributions go to those four. With a, you know, twenty, almost 25% of our funding coming from grants, which is great to see. And then the general government fund is is fairly low because we've accounted for the. Measure H dollars going to the streets fund in the in the streets section of funding there. And then there's a contribution by HCSD that is part of their contribution into the wastewater fund for the city treating the wastewater that comes from. The greater Eureka area. So as we kind of talked about the beginning of the presentation, do the not going to the planning commission meeting prior to presenting to council, this is just going to be a presentation this evening and that. Those new projects, the five new projects will be going to the planning commission and then will be incorporated into this CIP. They should be there. None of those projects seem to be very controversial. They should all meet the general plan conformance and also strategic visioning. But anyway, thank you for your time tonight and. Really appreciate you listening to the the very long and exciting. Capital Improvement Program presentation. Thank you.
It is exciting, really. I mean, this is the core of what we do right at the city is making sure. Everybody's able to get around and function and flush their toilets and drive to the store and. This is how it all happens. So thank you for being so thorough. Does anybody, Councilmember Royo has a question?
I have several, so I'm just gonna give a couple and then maybe share the airtime. I wanted to see, first of all, it's great to see the impacts of measure H and knowing that our sales tax is is actually been higher than anticipated. Are you planning to adjust? Any of the projected implementation of street maintenance or any of those projects and kind of move them up to account for that? Higher sales tax. I know that that must be affecting measure H as well.
Yeah, it's something we've definitely discussed and would be tracking, I think now. Finance Director Millar is looking at trying to, as he presented, I believe, was the last meeting or the meeting before he presented, did a presentation on kind of the status of. Where we're at and he projected that, but I think also trying to have a reserve there in some cases to, you know, something to fall back on a nest egg to a certain degree. So the hope is, you know, that we will be able, you know, of course, I speak from the standpoint of, you know, wanting to put. Necessary projects out on the road. I would like to see some of those dollars go there, but. Right now, I think the hope is to kind of see how things progress through this next year and then reevaluate going into the next next fiscal year.
Thank you. I I think I'll group my, can I group my money questions and then come back to my other questions? Okay, I see that for almost all projects, we're anticipating a 4% contingency. But it does seem like a lot of times it's higher in contracts and a lot of entities want to use 10% or greater. So could you? Is 4% holding? Like, is is that working for budgeting? Do we need to be thinking about increasing that contingency?
Well, I think the 4% you're seeing there is the, that's what we're expecting to see through increases in. It's not contingency, but the word is slipping my mind here. That's, you know, the anticipated increase in the cost on a given basis every year. And you're right, we've definitely heard, we've seen, like I mentioned earlier, the the price of asphalt has gone up for a number of reasons and we're starting to see those costs. Come in. We haven't bid enough projects to really know exactly how that feels, but and speaking with other member or, you know, organizations, Arcata and others. You know, they're definitely anticipating higher increases when it comes to project costs and we feel like we've tried to account for those and we definitely have ways. increases when it comes to project costs. And we feel like we've tried to account for those and we definitely have ways that we can make projects still happen if we need to reduce the amount of, you know, the amount of paving we're doing, we can make small adjustments to make sure that we still have a project going and that we still fit it within the budget we have.
Okay, thank you. And my last money question is, I can't recall exactly what happened with the, I know there were some matching funds available for communities that from the state for communities that did like self-help tax that would fund infrastructure. Did we, did we miss that by not passing it the first time?
Yeah, we went, rather than doing a specific tax, which would have been geared specifically towards transportation, we chose to do a general, a general tax. And so that doesn't allow for us to do the self-help, be part of that self-help program.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have questions? Councilmember Castellano.
Let's see, thanks for the report. I didn't see composting on here. I know, you know, SP 1383 is, is a big mandate we're all looking at. Is that because it's you know, because the city's partnering with other cities through HWMA or is it just because the costs haven't been anticipated yet?
I think both those things and then probably more just trying to, there, there's just not a clear picture is exactly how those, how that project would move ahead. So it's difficult for us to try to anticipate it in a document like this without having you know, an understanding of partnerships and, and dollars and how, how that'll actually function. So yeah, it's definitely something that we, we thought about, but difficult to incorporate currently.
And then just one more question. For the wastewater improvements and, you know, waiting for the permit from the regional board, what's the timeframe on that?
Well, that's a challenging question. We've been discussing the last permit, which was from 2016 with them since 2016. And we're going into our new permit currently, which we should be getting some going into the public comment period for that permit shortly. And that I believe is coming up here in June or July when that permit is up to go to the board. However, well, we'll just leave it at that. That is the, that is the schedule that we're working under now. We've had a lot of delays and things that have slowed the process since through the last five years. So I'm a little hesitant to get excited about that particular date and an outcome there, but that's, that's what we're currently working under.
And Councilmember Bauer.
Jesse, I thought it was a really interesting presentation, by the way. Just like the mayor said, you know, this is this kind of stuff that people need, how, how we get around and thanks to everybody that voted for measure H because it's really changing how, how our city is improving. So many great things going on. I did have a question on the Fisherman's Terminal. Did the contractor use bamboo or something to put into pilings? I mean, they only lasted 15 years. I think there's pilings out in the bay that are 100 years old. So I feel like, is that, is that cost going to come to us? You know, I mean, just curious.
I think we're looking at ways to fund getting new pilings installed. I'm not particularly working on that, but I know that we've got a team on it that's doing a great job of trying to pursue some funding to replace some of those fender piles along the Fisherman's Terminal. And yeah, I was really surprising to see infrastructure like that go that quickly. But, you know, we also have, what we have in the bay is an extremely, you know, it's a very corrosive and aggressive aggressive biota, you know, all the bugs and all the, the, all that goes along with the different title changes with drying and wetting of wood like that. It just, it has a hard time standing up. Luckily, it's just the fender piles, which are meant to be, you know, they're meant to be sacrificial for boats running into them and cracking them. Now, there's a lot of, there's a lot of better designs out there that'll last a heck of a lot longer now than wood. So I think that's probably what we're going to be looking for, something that's going to stand the test of time, really be able to stand up to all the different, the environment, the, the biota in the water there that likes to eat wood. And hopefully have a long solution there, but I, I don't know exact timing of that or where that stands.
All right. Thank you. And then one last thing on the Tesla batteries. Are those all hooked up? I thought there was some problem with getting those connected to PG&E.
I think we're all hooked up now, yes. And there was some getting PG&E's review and approval of the, of each one of the individual stations took some time, took longer than was anticipated. It was an internal PG&E process. I'm not exactly sure why they took so long that basically those, those energy storage systems were installed and ready to go. And then we were just waiting for PG&E to come through and do their, their inspection and sign off on it before we could fire them up. So yeah, I believe they're all up and running at this point.
Awesome. Well, thanks to city staff too, for all the great work going out there. Appreciate it.
I have a question too. First, I want to say, I think those pilings that are 100 years old are just super toxic. Probably we don't want to do the same thing, but they're really effective. What I wanted to ask Jesse is, for the sidewalk repair that we're going to be doing in front of some of our facilities, is there any opportunity to work with the neighbors? Because I know that property owners are responsible for their own sidewalks and we have some that are not in great shape. Could we kind of bundle with our projects so that maybe they can get a, a lower price or something if they opt to do it when we are? Something like that. I think we do that with the lateral pipe stuff, so.
Yeah, we had, that was certainly something we're doing with the sewer lateral ordinance where we're trying to, you know, have, we try to have a project that, you know, folks can jump in on and, and try to take advantage of the the large volume of work that we're doing in order to get better prices for their particular, their particular residents. And we've talked about doing that with sidewalk. We tend to do pretty small projects currently, but I think it's something that, you know, we definitely should continue to talk about and and maybe even, you know, I don't mean to say just continue to talk about it, but I mean, like develop a plan that could be implemented. I think it's a, I think it's a good idea and I the, the, I think the challenge there is just that the magnitude of of sidewalk work that we do, which is not a whole lot in what with our smaller sidewalk project versus our larger repair projects where we don't, we might repair a bit of sidewalk along with those. But that might, there still might be opportunities there for us to, to create a list of people who are interested and bring them in and, you know, take advantage of some of those bids.
Yeah, unfortunately, you're right. Some of those sidewalks, they're not necessarily near projects, the ones that are the worst off, but I do know it's very daunting for homeowners to address that issue and it's frustrating when they realize that it's their responsibility, although it, it is their responsibility. So if we have Councilmember Moulton.
I actually have just the housekeeping thing. I realize that there's more to the process before this is the official plan in progress, but when will this be available to the public to review?
I think likely what will happen, because we haven't gone to planning commission, is that we will be, once we go to through planning commission and hopefully, you know, fingers crossed, those five projects, new projects will meet the intent of what the planning commission is reviewing. Then we'll come back to, to you, the council for approval. And then after that, once everything's finalized, then we would put it up on our website. So people can go to the city's website and click on it and be able to review everything that's in there.
Okay, great. Meanwhile, the ongoing one is there and a lot of this stuff is in there already. I would really appreciate page numbers. Is that crazy? Because I'm trying to reference these things to tell people and I want to point them to it in the document and it's written like an engineering manual and without any page numbers. Just for transparencies and clarify and clarity sake, just, you know, so regular citizens like me can understand it.
We're going to go back to Councilmember Royal. Have you had a chance yet, Kim? Have you said it? No, then I, Councilmember forgot.
So are we, because we're just receiving a report, are we doing comments and questions now? Are we just doing questions? Can we do comments? But I guess what I'm asking is, are we doing the?
It's just a presentation?
Right, so there's no public comment?
No.
So we can give some comments?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all it, okay. Are you? Oh, yeah, I do have some. Fog brain. So I was just curious, Jesse, I loved your presentation and it's really exciting for so many, so many reasons. I'm curious, this is just kind of a fun question, but you know, the rendering that you put up at the beginning with all that vegetation? Yeah. Is that truly going to become a reality, the vegetation?
That was, so we put that rendering together with our consultant, the, the team's consultant with the multimodal mortar multimodal corridor plan for Broadway. And so I think Caltrans, some of the initial plans that I've seen for the work that they're doing on the South Broadway Complete Streets Project and as well as the middle, middle couplet project, they've incorporated a lot of street trees, not to the density that was in that rendering. I don't know if Caltrans has the appetite for that much landscaping in there right away. But they certainly incorporated street trees, which was very much a recommendation coming out of that plan from HCOG, the city, and then I think the majority of the folks who participated in that planning study.
Great. Well, that's nice to hear because it used to be that they weren't going to put any street trees. So that's exciting. Let's see. So secondly, I just was curious on the Coast Guard, Coast Guard Building. What was the timeline for that again? Is that going to be finished this year or did you say 2023?
I believe it's going to be finished this year. I'm not sure if, that's my, that's my understanding is it's going to be completed in this next fiscal year.
Okay, that's going to be a great asset to Old Town for sure, having, you know, a nice place for the police to be for sure. And then I, I just wanted to make a point that I'm, it's really exciting when you're doing this plan to see that there is so much park improvement happening. You know, our parks have been neglected for a really long time and it's great to see that we're finally like actually getting the money and to, to take care of those things. And I just wanted to point out that Ross Park is actually happening right now. Parts of it are happening right now. It's really exciting. They're replacing the, the ground underneath the place structure and all of that. The Bear and Coyote exhibit, that's going to be really exciting. Thank you, Bear River Rancheria for helping with that. And then lastly, the projects for summer 2022 on X, Y, W, and V, those are down near Target, is that correct? Wonderful. Thank you for getting that in sooner. Those streets have been neglected again for so long. So yeah, I just, I'm really grateful for measure H and that people did decide to pass it as opposed to, you know, when they didn't pass measure I, because we got a lot of wonderful things happening. So thank you so much, Jesse and your team.
Yeah, you know, and Kim, you made, you reminded me of something that I had wanted to, we, we talked about incorporating a section on grant pursuits that are kind of in progress right now where we don't know one way or the other, but you know, there's, you mentioned the park improvements and the community service team, you know, they're just, they're going after as much grant funding as they can out there. And, you know, they're being successful in a lot of cases. We also went after some dollars for some stormwater. There was a an opportunity for some grants for stormwater as well as park improvements and art and LID features and vegetation. So there's a few, there's certainly a, a pretty good list of grants that are out there that we should be hearing back on in the next, you know, three or four months. And you know, we'll, we'll continue to go after those, those, those grant opportunities to bring dollars in and, and make improvements to the, to the parks and to the things that we don't have as much dollars for. So yeah, I think it's, like you mentioned, it's great to see those improvements happening at all the parks.
When I saw those things over on Second Street by Target, I thought of you, Kim. I went, oh, Kim's going to be so happy. Councilmember Royal.
Thank you. Okay, I just wanted to see, I know we're doing a facilities master plan and so is the county. So obviously there's some overlap of you know, in Eureka of county and city facilities or some potential opportunities for co-location. Could you speak to what the coordination has been on that facilities master plan?
Yeah, so we're using the, we're using the same consultant that did the county's facilities master plan, which they've been, they've been great to work with. So they brought some of that knowledge base as far as, you know, just, they just did that similar exercise for the county. So we, they had a good feel for some where there was overlap between the county and city and, you know. So it's certainly something that we're kind of at that point where we're just getting to, you know, we've kind of done the evaluation of our existing facilities and then we've kind of gone the next step of like, what are those other opportunities out there that might help with some of those? So I don't think we're at the point now of we're not now where we've already had coordination with the county, but we're at that point now where that coordination, you know, would happen if it was going to happen, just because that's that next phase that we're at right now is, is understanding what those additional projects would be and, and understanding what the county's projects were as well.
Great. Well, I can say I look forward to opportunities to kind of perhaps work together to address shared challenges there. And then I know you mentioned the phase one of brownfield sites and I, I've, I've heard that phase two is often not funded or it's harder to get funding. I, I don't know, what's your sense of our readiness to apply for phase two funding to really kind of address the issues with some of the brownfields and contamination?
Well, we have, so our project, our community wide assessment grant includes phase one assessments and then also phase two assessments. So we have dollars to do phase two on the parcels that we identify. I think the challenge is kind of getting from that point to getting to implementation dollars to actually go out and do the cleanup. So unfortunately, it's been a slower process than I would, I would have liked in order to get through the phase ones and the phase two, there are some changes at EPA with their processes that really slowed us down. So nonetheless, we are continuing forward and I think we will have opportunities, once we get into those phase two, to start planning to when the other grant funds are going to come out from EPA or under other grant funding sources there that we can start looking at some potential implementation dollars.
Awesome. I'm excited about hearing the presentation about where those are and and just learning more about how we can move those remediation efforts forward. And then lastly, well, nope, second to lastly, I know we have, you know, I was thinking about streets and roadways and traffic calming and how there's always so much interest in having like traffic related law enforcement, but it's not always something that we have the capacity for to do at the scale people want it throughout the city. So I was wondering if we already have or could get through some of these grant programs, changeable message signs or portable radar, radar feedback signs? I don't know if that's something we have or the county has. I can't remember who has what. But are those things that we have already?
We have some, so we have portable message signs that we use with our maintenance crews when they're out doing construction work. So those are the, you know, the big rectangular signs that flash up different messages to people to inform the traveling public of what's going on. So those guys have those which are pretty well accounted for with the work that they do. And then we also have a portable radar feedback sign that we can drag around town and put in certain locations to give that radar feedback. We've also looked at and do some of these graces installing permanent radar feedback signs in some of those locations. And I know that those have, you know, some people feel like they kind of get lost after a while if they're there forever, but those are definitely things that we're considering and I'm I'm not 100% sure, but I would guess that there probably is, there could be funding out there for additional PCMS is the portable changeable message sign and also the radar feedback signs.
Yeah, I just know we get a lot of requests about traffic calming and concerns about speeds in particular. So perhaps deploying those in locations where you know, there's been an uptick in complaints from the neighborhood could be something that we do in the future. I swear, this is my last question. I know that we were working with Caltrans on some of those short-term improvements to Broadway to address pedestrian safety in particular. Do you have an update on the status of that? I know you spoke to the kind of longer term vision, but any thoughts there?
Yeah, a couple. The, so we, the city pursued some, some dollars to do. We pursued some funding to look at doing pedestrian level scale lighting along Broadway between Hawthorne and to Henderson roughly. So that, we've kind of figured out what is, what the cost is and what's needed from there from PG&E. And I believe those, sorry, those weren't pedestrian level. Those were the increasing the wattage of the bulbs for the Cobra over. for the Cobra overhead so that would provide more light across the entire width of the roadway. So that's something that has already been implemented in that section between Hawthorne to Henderson, that was done by city staff. And, and with working with PG&E to get those increases to those, the wattages on those light bulbs through there. We've pushed Caltrans every step of the way through the planning process that they're working on with the South Broadway Complete Streets project and also with the Middle Cuplet to make sure that pedestrian and, and higher level lighting are incorporated into those projects. We'll continue to do that. So that's kind of more or less where the lighting side of the short-term projects are. Caltrans, I believe they have moved the bus facility, there's a shelter just to the south of Wabash on Broadway. And I believe they've shifted that to another location to hopefully that would make it less desirable for people to try to cross mid-block to get over to that location. I haven't heard, I believe that's completed, I'm not a hundred percent sure, and I'm not sure what the outcome has been so far, if it's been analyzed by, by Caltrans. Haven't, haven't got a report back from them on that. And I also haven't got a report back on the status of incorporating a crosswalk at Hawthorne, which I believe they mentioned adding additional crossing there and not sure where that one stands. So I definitely have some of the same questions you do from where they're at. And we do anticipate getting an update from Caltrans at the next H, I believe it's the next HCOG TAC meeting they're going to come back to and give us an update on some of their Caltrans projects.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Castellano.
Let's see, I, I definitely also agree with Councilmember Arroyo about the potential for collaboration with the county for the facilities master plan. You know, hopefully we can encourage the county, you know, to, to work with us on that and to look for options where we can pool resources, you know, when possible. I'm curious if the Clean California Grant, that, that may fund some of these pedestrian improvements as well or the along Broadway or is that still kind of in the works what we're going to apply for?
Yeah, so Clean California, we submitted three Clean California grants last, oh, two weeks ago. And one of those projects was looking at lighting along the entire Broadway corridor, well, nearly the entire Broadway corridor, we basically maxed out the amount of money that we could put towards, towards lighting through a grant-funded project. And so that would certainly, and there were some other aspects to that, but it was primary of pedestrian scale lighting was incorporated in that project. And we had two other Clean California grants, one that focused on Highland Park and down to the Truesdale access to the, to the Hickory Trail down there. And that would look at bicycle and pedestrian improvements as well as stormwater LID, trash capture, trash bins at Highland Park, as well as some benches, some artistic benches, some artistic, some art incorporated with some of the facilities at the, at Highland Park. And then additional lighting at Highland Park and street lighting down Highland as well as bike lanes and some sidewalk gap closures. So that was, that was one of the other applications. And the third application was for the South Gateway Project. And doing some of the, some of the stuff that Caltrans wasn't capturing in their Complete Streets project down there at that end of Broadway. So looking at the, you know, kind of that, that gateway feature, more of the artistic side of it, that we're, we're hopeful that, we're hopeful that all three of the grants are successful. But those are things, you know, that clearly the cities had desire for and we're trying to find, continue to try to find funding for.
Thanks so much. And then just a couple really, really quick comments. I, I feel like when you, the graph of the funding by group, it'd be great to list Measure H specifically just so people can, can see an easy show of like what Measure H is funding in terms of percentages. And then you mentioned, when you were talking about 2030 Park, you mentioned that this is well-known, you know? But just to say that people are often asking me about 2030 Park. And I think we all think that things are well-known, but often that message isn't necessarily getting out to the citizens. So I don't know if there's a way that we could, I don't know, like, in social media, like a CIP highlight of the week or something, just to-
To be fair, I think he said that the problems were well-known. That was what he said was-
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
However.
To that point then, but, but yeah, some sort of CIP project of the week or something so that just a way of getting that message out more of how much work is being done in the city, I think could really be beneficial.
I love a project of the week idea for CIP, that's fun. I have one more question, oh, you do too. Go ahead, okay. So my question is, one of the, one of the downsides of all the fabulous construction that's going on is there's all this construction going on. And, you know, this summer it was just so busy. And I know that there's a level of notification that we can provide and then there's, there's some that we can't because we don't know which streets are necessarily going to get, they're going to get to on a specific day. What are the expectations of our, our contractors to provide detour signs and notifications to the neighbors?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a group effort from our contractors and city staff in order to get the, get the word out on, when it comes to construction. So oftentimes we'll send out, you know, press releases ahead of time trying to just, you know, do a big broadcast of, hey, this is coming, it's going to be on these dates, you know, anticipate delays or anticipate service interruptions. And then from that point, which, where we have those, you know, those, those, those come out on a given, like almost a weekly basis during construction project. Then our contractors have the, the requirement to provide notice when they're going to be doing work or interrupting, whether it's traffic or service. They need to provide 48 hours' notice or around a weekend, they need to provide even more notice. And oftentimes as a staff, that's where we, we struggle to make sure that we stay on top of the contractor. It doesn't happen very often, but you know, we, you know, that's our job is to make sure that those are going out. And sometimes it's challenging to make sure that that does happen. And then from a traffic control standpoint, there, we always have, for these major construction projects, we always have a traffic control plan that's been reviewed by city staff and approved. And that's what our, our team on the ground is out there doing is they're trying to make sure that the contractor is setting up their traffic control as they should be, so everybody's safe, whether it's the traveling public's safe or whether it's the contractor's safe. And that's really, you know, and then that people have a way to get around and they're not just led to a, a dead end. So we always try to, during the process, we try to reevaluate while we're out there and take a look and see what's going on, you know, doing independent drive-throughs. It can be challenging, like last year we had so much construction going on all at once, which is pretty unique from the standpoint of all the roadway work that was going on with the, the STIP dollars that we had and then the, the excess dollars that we had saved up to put towards road dollars and then the Measure H dollars all coming together at once. So that was challenging, but I think we've learned from it and we, we typically have a pretty solid process for trying to get notification out. It's just, sometimes it's hard if people don't see the mailer on their doorknob or they don't, they don't get the message. It can be, it can be painful for folks and we understand that. We, we just, we try to work with them as much as we can during those periods to, to, you know, to work around their needs while also, you know, understanding that the, the project has needs as well. So we try to balance that the best we can.
Yeah, I think last year there was just so very much that people would, you know, be near 14th Street and then they'd finally get to Henderson and they'd be like, what? And, you know, when my friends would say that to me, I'd usually answer with, you're welcome, but I can't, I can't say that to everybody, so. Councilmember-
Yeah, and we're hitting those major, those major streets as well because those, those are the first ones that we want to get done are the major thoroughfares. So you talk about 14th or Henderson or, you know, these major crossings that get all the way across the city, 14th Street. You know, these are ones that you can get all the way to West or you can get all the way across town without having to take another route. And so when there's work on those, it really, you know, it really sends out of direction, out of direction traffic pretty far and can, and send delays. We totally understand that, hopefully as things progress, we won't have, you know, we'll be able to control a little bit better going forward.
Councilmember Burghel.
So just on that topic, I just want to say that I felt like last year on social media, the city did a good job of posting when construction was happening. And if we can keep moving forward with that as well, I think we need all the tools that we can get to kind of educate people and let them know. But I was just curious about the brownfield properties, or, thank you. I was curious, are we going to have a separate discussion about the properties identified or how's that going to work?
Yeah, so we don't have a specific meeting set up. Like I said, we've been going on a very slow schedule for a number of reasons, which is not very common. Well, we've never done, I've never done one of these particular brownfield assessment projects before, but it seems to be going slower than our typical grant-funded project would move ahead for a number of reasons, whether it's the pandemic or the EPA changing some of their requirements, you know, kind of after we had already gone through the grant, you know, after we'd already been awarded the grant. So I guess, sorry, the long answer, the shorter answer to your question is, I think, you know, those are definitely things we can do, there's not a long list of projects. And it's certainly something, once we get a little more clarity, like I would like the project to move ahead a little bit further so we could come back with some, a better feel for what those projects are because some of them are up in the air to a certain degree.
Thank you, and I just have to say I love your picture in behind you. One of your kids?
Yeah, my son.
Very sweet. I miss those days.
All right, do we have any other questions or comments? We pretty much, you know, I felt like we participated fully with that. So thank you very much. Again, thanks for all the hard work and we're very much looking forward to, I'm very much looking forward to people telling me how sorry they are for all the construction again because that means we are doing a lot of great work. And we will move on, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we are going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. There is three minutes each and if you would like to raise your hand on Zoom and if you'd like to come up if you're in the room. And be sure the little green light is on the microphone.
I don't know, you'll probably all end up upset that I've blown me anyway. I usually wait till other people have spoken before I spoke, but I was happy to see that I wasn't the only one that almost fell asleep during that overly long repetitive presentation. And I thought it was awfully kind of you all to pretend like you had been interested. Beyond that, so I guess tonight the mask mandate is lifted supposedly, right? But only for certain people. And I'm kind of wondering as to what science our elected representatives are following when they made that decision to partially lift the mandate. So I want to ask you a question, a yes or no, simple yes or no question. Ms. Burghel, do you believe that this mask will prevent me from making you sick or me getting sick from you?
I'm not going to respond to your question, this is public comment, we don't do back and forth.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to assume that you're all going to respond the same way. Which means that you don't believe this mask has any effect whatsoever, right? Am I correct? All of you? Do any of you believe this mask has any positive effect as far as stopping a virus?
I will say one time that we are not going to answer questions, so if you'd like to ask that question, you can ask us outside of our public comment time.
Okay. Since everybody agrees it has no use, I'm not going to wear it. I'm not going to play this charade anymore, this game. And Ms. Burghel has her mask down.
It is about eight o'clock, so we're going to take a break right now. It's our time anyways.
Good night, y'all.
Kathy Stevens, if any way you'd like to handle this. We'll do our break now. We are going to come back to the meeting and reopen public comment. So is there anybody in house who'd like to make a public comment?
Hello, everybody, my name's Ash Teeter, the Humboldt Freedom Coalition, humboldtfc.com. As I've said before here, my wife, she lost her job to the city last October because of your illegal unconstitutional vaccine mandate. It really hasn't been working out as y'all hoped it would, has it? I mean, fully vaccinated staff and council members catching COVID. People having adverse reactions that won't get the second shot and losing their job over not getting a second shot even, you know, despite doctors' recommendations. Staff having doubts about wanting to stay on board with, you know, prospective ongoing boosters being required. Has the, the council reached the point where it seems prudent to admit they might be wrong or is there such a point? Glad to see everyone in the council is feeling better and able to attend, that's, that's good. I still see some cloth masks are being worn for decorative effect, even though I think we're going to stop pretending that they work tomorrow. I guess today we're only pretending that the N95 masks work. Does council believe that, that they work so much, they'll continue to wear these masks even after the, the mandate ends here? Everyone's still going to keep wearing them? Seventy thousand people just gathered last weekend for the Super Bowl not wearing masks. You know, all close together, but we're still going to make our kids wear them in schools, you know, it's, and, and a mask mouth is concern, you know, bacteria gets out of control. Speech learning disorders are reported like up to 400% more in young kids bearing, forced to wear masks at school. If anyone here is actually concerned about the kids in our schools, I invite you to join many of us protesting this atrocity this coming Sunday at the Humboldt Honking, it's going to be down at the, the city or the Humboldt Courthouse, just down the street there. Starts like noon, you want to come join us for a protest picnic against, to help out the kids being forced to still wear these masks. So this event also stands in solidarity with the 1.5 million Canadians protesting these same inhumane mandates in negative 22-degree weather. With over 50,000 big rig trucks in attendance up there protesting this same COVID nonsense. Additionally, this event supports the millions of other people in almost every country around the world in the streets saying no to this global tyranny being pushed upon humanity. So this Sunday, if you want to come join us to, you know, get the masks off the kids, that's the time. Humboldt County Courthouse, okay? Folks, have a nice evening, thank you.
Come on up.
Very nervous, I've never done this before. My name is Louise and I'm a Humboldt County resident. I'm the mother of five, the grandmother of eight children, eight grandchildren, I live in McKinleyville. In spite of the fear that they were instilling on us about the COVID to begin with, I realized early on that I was not going to be able to isolate the way that they were recommended we did because I have a couple of grandchildren who needed me. And their emotional needs were greater than any health need that I had, okay? I was willing to risk myself to provide for them the need that they had. I found out the fear was unfounded, that this virus is predominantly affects very old people. People who are unhealthy, obese, who have comorbidities that they don't take care of. I do have a comorbidity, but I handle my comorbidity, I take my medication every day, I see my doctor, I exercise, I eat right and I take vitamins. And that's pretty much the key to beating this virus. They have closed parks, they've closed movie theaters, they've closed zoos, they've closed zoos and they've suspended birthday parties and sports for children. It seems like we're punishing the children because they don't have a voice. We are instilling them an irrational fear despite the fact that the mortality rate among children is considerably less than the flu. They have a greater chance of getting killed in a car accident than they do have from COVID. They have, for 700-plus days, the children have been forced to wear masks all day while watching entitled politicians and celebrities gather maskless for this past year. The recent Super Bowl is just a glaring example of all them gathered in one place without masks. I wonder if this country is broken around repair. We are not saving the children. We are destroying them and their future. I have two six-year-old twin boys. Their speech development is so far behind. We cry. We cry about it. We don't know what we're going to do. They can't even get speech therapy without a mask on, okay, which is ridiculous. It's ridiculous. My granddaughter, her face is broken out and all over where the mask is, but she continues to wear it because she's 15 and it's good because she likes to hide behind it. Anyway, I promised my granddaughter that I would, this would never happen again in her lifetime. And that's why I'm standing up here, because I have to keep that promise to her. I have to try to fight to make sure that this does not happen to these children again in this lifetime. Children are not dying from this. There have been no major outbreaks in the schools. There is no reason to keep these masks on our children. It's doing too much harm to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in house that wants to come on it?
Last time I walked up here, I noticed I'm bald.
We can't see it from here.
I didn't know. Anyway, my name's Scott Chandler. Long time, I was born here. Anyway, that was a great presentation by your engineer, Jesse, and he said, "I went by today and looked at the concrete I complained about a month ago between Third and Fourth on F Street, both sides of F." Well, Jesse said that a private contractor grinds those down in his report. Can't somebody drop a dime and have him come do the job? Also, your guys' term limits are temporary compared to what you can do. What you do is gonna last a long, long time. And I think you're misguided with your project on the parking lot. It would be great somewhere else, like can it be done on the Bloom Track or down there, maybe on Waterfront Drive? It seems like you don't care about the business people trying to make a living, and this will just make it tougher for them. I noticed you just, it seems like you don't care. It's a shame. It's just a shame. Another thing I wanted to talk about was this, these coal barons that the rumor has that they'll fix the railroad. Well, there's businessmen in Eureka that wanna put a railroad east to west. If that happened, it'd probably take, I don't know how many years to get it done. But then the pork could be used, like we all dreamed the pork could be used. And maybe these coal guys, I know you don't like coal because it burns dirty and this and that. But maybe by the time they got the railroad through, they burn it cleaner. There's a lot of different grades of coal. Some burn cleaner than others. Anyway, I had a few other things, but thanks for listening to me.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's a nice shirt. We all like it.
We have one Humboldt Freedom Coalition. How's their hand raised? Go ahead, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Thank you for this time to speak. My name is Donnie Creekmore with the Humboldt Freedom Coalition. I was calling in to speak and to resonate with the previous speakers, especially Louise's concerns about, you know, what's happening with our children and the masking, which is an undue medical advice that's just 100% not justified and needs to end. This whole COVID charade is gone on too far. Just the mere fact that we just pick random days to just remove the mask because, hey, that's the day just goes to show how kind of completely silly this entire charade has been. And I understand that all you guys, you have to wear the mask on while you're in there and you have to show face and you have to kind of capitulate with it because that kind of comes with the program. But for the rest of us in the public, we're really sick of it. And the egregious thing now is the idea that, you know, the vaccinated can go unmasked, but the unvaccinated can't. Meanwhile, you know, schoolchildren who are the lowest risk, you know, the most unvulnerable population to COVID-19, as all the peer-reviewed literature and our own county's data conclusively shows, they are forced to wear masks all day long around vaccinated faculty and teachers that can go unmasked in other indoor locations? I mean, you guys, I don't know, this is, this is weird stuff. And I mean, I'm sure there's some kind of mysterious magical justification somewhere in that nonsense, but I don't know. I fail to see it. I've got someone else here that needs to speak too in my time. I'm gonna go ahead and allocate my time to Blaine.
Attention, attention. The biggest protest of the year is this Sunday at the Humboldt County courthouse from 12:00 AM to 4:00 PM with speakers at 1:00 PM. Do not miss out. Do not let this day slip past you without showing up. The free people of the world must unite. Join your local grassroots movement, the Humboldt Freedom Coalition, as we protest in solidarity with our freedom-loving neighbors to the north, the Canadian truckers, as they protest against the vaccine mandates in Canada. Bring your American flags. Bring your Canadian flags. Bring your freedom-loving flags of your choice. Come and meet your fellow Humboldt County citizens this Sunday. As we stand united, we are families, veterans, and local business people. And most of all, we are Humboldt Countyans and we think Humboldt County should be the county of liberty and not mandates. Learn more about this event at humboldtfc.com.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands.
I, I don't either. If anyone else on Zoom would like to speak, please unmute and go forward now. All right.
All right. Seeing no other public comment, we will move on in the agenda to the consent calendar. I understand Councilmember Bergel wants to pull F4. And Councilmember Bauer would like to pull F6. Anything else? All right, then can I get a motion?
Move approval of the balance of the consent calendar minus items F4 and F6.
A second.
Can we get a vote on that, please?
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Alrighty. Councilmember Bergel.
Thank you. So the reason I brought this forward is there's been a lot of talk about, or had this pulled, there's been a lot of talk about our police department and how it's running and the transparency of investigations and that type of thing. So I wanted to pull this and have some discussion so that the public knows exactly what we're doing and what's going on with that. So I think Director, I mean, City Manager Slattery?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this item here is related to the independent police auditor request for proposals that was put out. It initially was put out on November 11th. A couple of months ago, I believe it was in October, maybe three months ago, staff brought to council an updated version of the Citizens Advisory Board and council had requested that, an oversight board, that it converts to an oversight board. And when we brought that up to council, one of the ideas was to include an independent police auditor as a component of that ordinance. And so on November 11th, staff put out an RFP for an independent police auditor. On January 7th, we closed out the request for proposals and we received two responses. Staff formed a committee to review those two proposals and ranked those proposals. The committee consisted of myself, Assistant City Manager Powell, Captain Stevens, Officer Cassetti, the president of the EPOA, Dr. Pardo, who is a member of the Citizen Advisory Board, as well as our Human Resources Director Folger. So that group got together, ranked the proposals, and this is, the OIR group was ranked the highest and felt that they met the qualifications and had the experience that we're looking for. This would definitely be an independent police auditor. It would be a position that would be hired by the city manager. And the city manager would be overseeing the contract related to the independent police auditor. Independent police auditor would look, would work as kind of a consultant and the sounding board for the oversight board. This is the first step in the process. We have, after receiving the comments from council about that oversight board draft resolution, we've incorporated those into the resolution, excuse me, ordinance. We've had Chief Jarvis provide input into that. We just today took that oversight board draft ordinance to the Citizen Advisory Board today, received feedback from them. If council approves this independent police auditor recommendation, we'll be sending the oversight board ordinance to them for review. And then we're shooting for March 15th to be bringing the oversight board draft resolution for introduction to council and then for future adoption. So if council approves this, staff will start working with the OIR group. The main head of the OIR group is, I'm gonna butcher his last name, but it's Michael Janaco, Janaco. He is a former prosecutor for the Civil Rights Division of the DOJ. They have a lot of experience in this field and work for many other municipalities doing the same type of work. They also have familiarity with our area here. They worked with HSU on an investigation up at HSU. So they are familiar with our area as well. And based on their proposal, the committee felt that they were the most experienced and had the best qualifications to serve the purpose of a police auditor for the city of Eureka. So if there's any other questions, staff is available.
Does anybody else have any questions? Does anybody in the audience have any questions? We do have people online, I suppose. Oh, Councilmember Arroyo.
So when this audit, I know that's sort of like an ongoing process, but I assume that there would be some publication. Is that something that we can share with the public to kind of increase their awareness about how processes work? Or is that really more for internal review? Is there gonna be a public-facing part of this and a, you know, I guess an internal portion?
So, you know, we have the draft ordinance that'll kind of define the framework as to what should we work from. Right now, the framework is basically they, they work with the city manager and they provide consultation to the oversight board to give them kind of background and those type of things related to the issues that they'll look at. There will be a component in there that allows for a complaint to be filed directly with the independent police auditor. That's not the typical protocol, but if, if it is, then the police auditor would work with EPD and see whether or not they've received that complaint and what's happened to it. But typically, the complaints go to the police department. It wouldn't be a position where they would hold public meetings and have discussions, but the oversight board is governed by the Brown Act and any decisions that are made, whether they're in closed session or in open session, will be open to the public for feedback. But this position, we don't see as providing, the reports that are reported, they're gonna have, provide a report to the city manager, to the city council, and those will come to the council at public meetings. And so that component would have a public aspect to it for sure.
Thank you. Yeah, I just kind of wanted to understand, you know, what will the public be seeing of this? I realize there are some, you know, perhaps some elements of that that would be more productive to share internally, but also, you know, where can we increase that feeling of awareness about what our department is doing and that we're up to speed with best practices and all that, you know, just looking for those opportunities.
And I think that that would come through the process of the oversight board. So, you know, when they make recommendations, the recommendations will be made available to the oversight board and they'll take them into consideration. The reports that were provided, the city manager, city council will go to the oversight board as well. So there'll be multiple opportunities for the public to receive the input that comes out of the oversight board and the IPA's recommendations. But one of the things that really resonated with the people on the committee is that they really understand the importance of being independent and maintaining that independence. And I think that that's one of the main reasons why I really felt that they were the most qualified to do the work for the city of Eureka.
Councilmember Bergel. So can you speak to the scope of what they're investigating? So is it internal affairs-type situations, just for the public to know what their scope of?
Sort of. Right now, we took the comments from council and we incorporated use-of-force complaints, you know, derogatory, you know, saying whatever, all of the things that are related to complaints. And then, so we'll bring back a draft and if that, you know, is something that council wants to amend or change, but we did incorporate the stuff the council had brought up as far as what would trigger the oversight board to look at this and what the participation level of the police auditor would be.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Arroyo.
I know that we have Chief Jarvis here. Thank you for being here and to all of you from EPD. I wanted to maybe, I apologize for putting you on the spot here, but I am curious. I know that the department you have, you previously worked with had engaged the services of, I believe, an auditor and has some form of chief's advisory board. Could you, could you perhaps speak to any of the benefits you saw from that?
Good evening. There were several mechanisms in place, mechanisms in place where I worked previously to this. There was a community review board.
Just to say, is your microphone on?
The green, green light.
Okay.
A community review board on police practices. There was a, a citizens advisory board to the mayor's office. And there was also chief's advisory boards. That was more of an informal board where community members could meet with the chief of police, provide information to the chief that they felt was important, that we could then pass down and act on. The community review board has since been changed since I was there. But during my tenure, I was a liaison to the board. And the board was a review-type board and there's different models. There's auditors. There's reviews. This board was a review board at the time. So they would take the investigations that internal affairs completed. They would divvy them up amongst teams. It was a huge board. It was like 27 people. So they would divvy them up between teams of two and three, do a complete biopsy of that report, look at every bit of evidence that was provided to the, to the investigator that was based on, their decision was based on all this evidence, so the board had access to all of that. And then they would present to the board in closed session. They would vote whether to accept the report or not, or they could work with us to try to get some changes. And, and then they would go into open session. They would report things, not in as much detail to the public, but the public could hear that either, yes, you know, we've looked at 15 reports and we agreed with the findings on 14 of them. We sent one back to get, to get another look. So it was, it was very transparent. I think we have an opportunity here and we'll talk more about it when this ordinance comes forward to create a sense of transparency here and also maintain the sense of, of not protection, but morale amongst the troops that they feel like they're being treated fairly. And I can tell you the biggest factor in all this, by my experience, is gonna be the people that you select to put on this board. So if someone's very pro-police, we don't need them on the board. If someone's very anti-police and has an agenda, we don't need them on the board. But if someone can clearly look at something in an unbiased, an impartial manner and make decisions based on what's best for the city and provide information to the city manager and to me about how do we improve our police department, then that's what we need here. And I can tell you that I firmly believe that any profession, but especially mine and ours, we need oversight to be a legitimate profession. But it needs to be fair and impartial in order to make it worthwhile. So we, we really look forward to it. We want to be active participants. I really appreciate the city manager allowing me to provide. I really appreciate the city manager allowing me to provide some input because I did spend a lot of years working with a board that sometimes worked well and sometimes didn't. And I learned a lot and I'm very pleased to be able to share that here. So thank you for that. But it's gonna be a great opportunity for us as a community and as a city and for us as a police department.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Anything else from council? And we are, I asked for public comment. I don't see any online. Okay, Councilmember Burgele.
So before we make the motion though, I'd like to state that this, this is not police overseeing police, right? This is, this is an outside, which is what, I, I bring that up because a lot of public that came and spoke on this was really concerned about that particular issue. So is that correct?
No, the, the main principal, Michael, is, is, like I said, a prosecutor for civil rights and the DOJ. He has four other, oh God, I'm killing, I believe, four other individuals that are also have the background in this field here that will have access to. And so, yes, they're all experienced in the police auditor field and have been doing this for a very long time.
Thanks. So with that, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a professional services agreement not to exceed $90,000 per year with the O R group to perform independent police auditor on-call consulting services.
I'll second.
All right. Can we have a vote, please?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't do that.
I just, I don't know what the scope of work exactly looks like or how that will be, if that's been fully defined yet in their proposal. But I, I'm hopeful that we can ask them to specifically report on what's going well. I would really love to, when we receive a report, for there to be some strengths-based analysis in addition to opportunities for improvement. I would just, I think it would probably bring us together and hopefully boost everyone's morale to point out like, these are some strong areas.
I, I think that's one of the biggest benefits, and I think Chief Jarvis chimed in on that. I think that having this oversight and the transparency will bring to light to a lot of people who have suspicions, I would say, or expectations of how E P D operates. And I think they're gonna be surprised as actually how it works. And, and the review of policy and procedures of E P D is gonna be a part of that. And I think that there'll be definitely positives that come out of this. And they'll be included in the reports that are provided by the police auditor.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure that that's like, I guess, an explicit request. Not that like everybody just needs an attaboy, but you know, I, I do think as a city, it would be nice to know. I know that we have done some very forward-looking things with policing. And it would be nice to have an opportunity to reflect on how that kind of fits with the trajectory in the field and, yeah, see what we're doing well. So thank you for including that.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, now we can all vote. Well, you all can vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. And I am guessing that Councilmember Bauer pulled F six to recuse himself?
That's it.
You wanna take a step out of the room? And we'll call you right back after the break. Does anybody have any questions that they want to ask about this item?
Just so you know, Deputy Community Services Director Ramey is on the call if there are any questions related to this. And I would like to say that it's good that this got pulled because we've had, I believe, three incidents of sinking boats in the marina over the last few months. And Harbor Superintendent Wilks has gotten a lot of commendation from both the Coast Guard, Humboldt Bay Fire, and other agencies that respond. This grant really goes a long way with providing the equipment. And Donald is the first on-site at all times. And he does a really good job of making sure that the environmental impacts associated with these are minimized. And he, he does a good job not only writing the grants, but also implementing responses to situations like this.
Excellent. I'm glad to hear that. Do you have anything to add? Deputy Community Services Director Ramey.
I reiterate what Miles said. We've had a boat fire and two boats sinkings in the last six months. Our response has been very good. And that's due in part to our ability to get this equipment and have staging and access to it. Our original grant that we received several years ago, I believe in 2017, was for $30,000. And that was a trailer, generator, boom, hard boom, soft boom, a lot of absorbance. And those things are costly. And for us to be good stewards of the bay, we need that stuff. And so it's wonderful partnership that we've worked with the Department of Fish and Wildlife, our local folks, as Miles mentioned, our marine safety detachment from the Coast Guard, our O S P R Office of Spill Prevention Response, local folks, Jeff Dayton and Cindy Murphy from D F W has also helped us, steer us in the right direction to get this funding. And so we're very appreciative and we'll continue, be able to continue to have great response to these issues.
Thank you so much. So I asked, nobody had questions. So I ask, is there any comment on Zoom? Anybody who wants to comment? It looks like the audience here is not here. So, all right, I will bring it back for a motion then.
I simply must make this motion. I'm a pollution prevention and response person in my Coast Guard role. So, and I'm still wearing that hat and just at a different unit. But I will make the motion to approve the attached resolution allowing the community services department to accept the grant award.
I'll second. All right. Any further discussion on this item? All right, wait, everybody vote.
For yes votes, Councilmember Bauer absent, motion carries.
Member Bauer, you may return.
Okay, thank you. That was what he's supposed to do, so good job. Yes. That was a good catch that you shouldn't have done that too. So, thank you. We also got to hear lots of great things about the program that we wouldn't have heard if you didn't pull it. So, thank you. All right. So now we have voted on all three of those items, right? Okay, we'll move on to item G, which is legislative action correspondence. And I had something, I think, Councilmember Castellano was gonna bring it up. Perfect.
Yes. Let's see, Connie Stewart reached out to me regarding a letter to the California Public Utilities Commission about advocacy for broadband efforts. And let's see, you know, and I brought this forward because there, there's been so much kind of need for advocacy. I don't know if I could go ahead and read this into the record or, or does council want to ask questions first or? Yeah.
Also, did, did we receive, did everybody receive a copy of that letter before the meeting?
It was about four o'clock. So I don't know if all the council members received it, but it was emailed to them.
Can you summarize?
I think for the, since the public didn't receive it, I think I need to read the letter.
Okay. Do you, do you have it?
I have it on my phone. Okay, I did, I told City Manager Slatter I did used to teach preschool, so I have some public reading experience. Dear President Reynolds and Commissioners Rick Schaffin, Sharoma, Hauck, and Reynolds, I am writing to request immediate action to allocate California Advanced Secure Services Fund, C A S F, collections into the regional consortia, public housing and adoptions accounts so that we can accelerate progress in closing the digital divide and achieving digital equity. I support the overall approach set forth by the Digital Equity Coalition and join with them in encouraging you to exercise the commission's authority to focus on achieving as much progress as possible in the next three years with the goal to get all low-income households connected to the internet. Establish commission policy to allocate at least $225 million in the next three years into the key three accounts to achieve tangible results. Rely upon past rulemaking for these C A S F accounts and expedite any further rulemaking that you deem essential so that digitally disadvantaged residents can benefit now. I urge you to work closely with the Digital Equity Coalition, which is comprised of experienced leadership organizations with established track records in both A, convening stakeholders to partner on building broadband networks, and B, mobilizing to get all low-income households online. These leaders know how to launch outreach in language and in culture, provide digital literacy training with standardized outcomes, and assist households sign up for affordable home internet service. This is a pivotal moment in time for all of us to reboot the way we serve the public. The public interest will be served by the commission working closely with the Digital Equity Coalition. Thank you for your consideration of my recommendations, of our recommendations.
All right. Now that we've heard the letter and there's a timeliness to it, do you, how do you guys feel about sending it? All right. Do we need to do a vote voter? Do we just do thumbs up? I forget on this. It's consensus, so we need a motion? Okay.
Do we need to take public comment on this?
Okay. Does anybody have public comment on this item? Councilmember, or City Manager, City Attorney Black, are you gonna say something?
I was, yes. I was just gonna say, I do think you need to vote on this.
Okay. Then, okay. Does anybody have any comments in the audience? Seeing none, I will bring it back for a motion or comments or discussion.
Would the motion be to direct staff to draft a letter in support? I mean, is that basically what we're looking for?
In this case, I was gonna say you have the option of sending the letter as presented. In other cases where there's no specific verbiage, you might direct staff to.
Okay. Please.
I move approval of the letters presented.
I'll second that.
There you go. I'll in favor.
I'll second.
Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thanks, you guys. All right. We have now moved to ordinances and resolutions. And I think this is actually a part where this is where we're redoing stuff that we did last time. We're doing our second, our second listening to them. So H one, January 2022 zoning code update. Principal Planner Getz.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Before you this evening is the adoption of the January 2022 zoning code update, which is, which was introduced at your last meeting. The update will add regulations to comply with S B nine to allow urban lot splits and second single-family homes on residential low-zone properties and regulations to comply with S B four seventy-eight to create a minimum floor area ratio of 1.25 and modify height limits in residential medium and residential high-zone districts. Modifications to language pertaining to vacation rental permits, AD uses vacation rentals, trees, small lot subdivisions, recreational vehicles, and the definition of the term existing are also included. Staff recommends you adopt bill number ten ten dash C S to approve the January 2022 zoning code update. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And I have a recommendation for you when you're, excuse me, for you when you're ready.
All right. Does anybody have any questions from council? All right. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back. Principal Planner Getz, do you want to share your screen with the recommendation? Or does somebody have it in front of them? Whichever's easiest. Councilmember Burgele.
So I'd like to make a motion that I move the city council waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt bill number ten ten dash C S, an ordinance of the city of Eureka adopting the January 2022 zoning code update to amend Eureka Municipal Code, Chapter 155.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion on this item? All right. Everybody vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carry.
All right. We're gonna move on to item H two. And this one is going to be City Attorney Black. And this is bill number ten eleven, Presentation of Claims for Certain Causes of Action Against the City.
Yes, Mayor. I believe your counsel is familiar with this item. It was introduced at your last regular meeting and is up tonight for adoption. If you have questions, I'm available.
Does anybody have any questions for City Attorney Black? Not gonna make it hard on his last day here? Do we have any comments from the audience on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back for a motion. Councilmember Arroyo.
I'll do the honors. I move that we waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt bill number one zero one one tax C S. Bill adding section thirty-nine point one one to chapter thirty-nine of Eureka Municipal Code requiring presentation of claims for money or damages under the Government Claims Act for claims otherwise accepted from the claim requirement by government sec, code section nine zero five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Bauer. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, everybody vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right. And now we are moving on to reports and action items. And this is item I one, Bod, is it Bodie or Bod, major subdivisions, S D M J twenty zero 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 one and S D M J twenty-one zero 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 one. And this is going to be Senior Planner Castellano, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, I'll get right, start, started right away. So it is Bodie. So, good evening, councilmembers. Tonight I'm presenting two projects together. It's the Bodie subdivision projects. The applicants, Mike and Ryan Bodie, seek approval of two tentative maps to subdivide two separate properties into four parcels, which is two per subdivision. So the city subdivision ordinance is located in Eureka Municipal Code abbreviated as E M C, chapter one fifty-four. Per E M C, section one fifty-four point zero four zero, paragraph D one, after the planning commission, commission's decision on a major subdivision project, a report must be made to the city council after a fifteen-day appeal period has ended. So on January tenth, twenty twenty-two, the planning commission held a public hearing, both in person and via Zoom, for the Bodie subdivision projects during, and during the public hearing. Oh, excuse me, I was not, sorry, it's a long night. During the public hearing, the applicant spoke, three members of the public spoke in opposition of the subdivision projects, and seven written public comment letters were received opposing the project and provided to the commissioners, which were in attachment for your agenda summary. The planning commission then approved the project with conditions and a fifteen-day appeal period ended on January twenty-fifth with no appeals filed. So again, paragraph D one further states that upon receiving tonight's report, the city council should review the map and conditions approved by the planning commission. Council may then either take no further action, which means the planning commission's conditional approval is final, and the applicants may continue with the process toward completing the conditions of approval and preparing the final maps, or direct council. Oh, my goodness. I'm sorry, you guys.
Did you think you were sharing something?
I did. That is just, well, let's see. Okay. Really, I really apologize. It's been a long day. So we talked about the chapter fifty-four ordinance. We, the planning commission did take action on these subdivisions. And then now we're presenting the report to you. At the public hearing, the applicant spoke, there was opposition. Public comment letters were provided, the planning commission did approve it, and there was no appeal filed. And so now here we are tonight presenting the, in your packet, you know, you have the planning commission report and the comment letters. And then you can either take no further action or you can review, you can schedule a public hearing and review the tentative maps to ensure that they conform with the zoning code or the state subdivision act. Oh, excuse me. So you may deny both the tentative maps at the public hearing if council makes one or more of the findings listed in. one or more of the findings listed in your agenda summary. So staff and the planning commission, through their action to conditionally approve the projects, do not believe that any of the findings for denial can be made. So briefly, here's the standard bird's eye view of where the properties are located in the context of the city limits. Here we are zooming in. The subject properties are located in the southern city limits in a suburban-style residential neighborhood. Subdivision A is at 3634 East Street. It proposes to subdivide a developed approximately 1,400 square foot, that's .31 acres, it's a corner lot into two parcels. And then subdivision B proposes to subdivide an undeveloped approximately 16,000 square foot lot, which is .38 acres into two parcels. So as previously stated, on January 10th, the planning commission did hold a public hearing, and they took action to adopt two resolutions, one resolution for each project. Here is what the original parcel looked like before subdivisions, and briefly, how we got here is there was two subdivisions before of that larger lot that I showed you, and there's currently five parcels now that were created from one. So anytime you have more, you create more than, well, four parcels or less is a minor subdivision, and that can be, the decision is by the director, and five or more parcels is the planning commission and then the city council. So the first subdivision happened in 2017, there was the larger lot, split off the, the developed lot from the vacant land, and then in 2019, they further subdivided the western portion into four lots. The applicant did provide testimony at the planning commission hearing why he didn't do the entire subdivision at once, and so it's my understanding that he needed to first subdivide the parcel, the, the original parcel into two for financing reasons, and then he did the second subdivision into the four lots because in the old zoning code, they had specific lot configurations, and now he's proceeding with the, the two, splitting the two because with the new zoning code update, there are no required lot configurations, like, you know, 20 foot by 60 foot would be the minimum, for example. Yeah, so that's how we got here. Here's the tentative map for subdivision A, so it proposes to split the corner lot, the resultant parcel 1A would be more than 7,000 square feet, and then resultant parcel A2 would be a little over 6,000 square feet, the minimum parcel size in this zone is 5,000 square feet. And here is a street view that I took of the existing residence on the corner there that will be separated from the garage, so there would, the lot line would go between those two. And then here's the second subdivision at the end of the, it's the flag lot of the four previous sub, four lot subdivision from 2019. It would create a 9,000 square foot parcel, and then the other parcel would be a little over 7,000, and the resultant parcel 2B would be access from a private road with an easement over resultant parcel 1B. Here is a current street view as well that I took in December, and that's approximately where the lot line would go, and that's that, the, the private road that would go back there. So if council chooses to take no further action, then, then staff doesn't need to do anything in the conditions, the project is approved with the conditions, or council can direct staff to schedule a public hearing, and here's a suggested motion. I will stop screen, screen sharing for now so I can see you, and then pull it back up when you're ready, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Royal.
I just have a couple of quick questions. Could you, I understand there's an easement proposed, but is, is this common that we have a, like resultant parcel B2 is not adjacent to any public right-of-way? So is this a pretty common thing that we see in the city? I mean, I don't think I've seen very much of it.
Yeah, it's a new provision of the zoning code. I believe the old one, you had to be fronting a public road, but now with the new zoning code, as long as you dedicate an easement, then you can have access that way. It is allowed in our zoning code now.
Okay, thank you. And a lot of the people's comments about this from the communications you received seem to be concerned about building height or proposed development, and I, I didn't, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see where there was any proposed project as part of this. What, do you know what, where that's coming from?
Yeah, because the subdivision is, is really, it's, it's just that, the subdivision and making sure there's, you know, utilities and access to serve the parcels, because development of the parcels is principally permitted. So the applicant does have a development plan associated with the four-lot subdivision that he is amending, you know, to add the two additional parcels, and he intends to do single-family homes with attached ADUs with, and attached garages, so as far as, you know, when he comes forward for the, the building permit, you know, that review will happen to make sure that that development conforms with all the, the standards of the zoning codes such as height and setbacks.
Okay, and then you mentioned that this was passed by the planning commission and no one appealed, so each of these landowner, or, excuse me, each of these commenters had the opportunity to appeal the planning commission's decision, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Braga.
So in looking at some of the letters, I too was curious, so are these buildings going to be duplexes? I heard what your description, and then what I'm reading is something different from different people, and are duplexes really appropriate for that neighborhood?
So I'm not sure if the applicant's in the audience, he was invited, he said he was going to come, but it is a bit late, but it's my understanding that it is a single-family residence with an ADU, so if you, I guess two dwelling units together, you could call a duplex, but it is a single-family home and a accessory dwelling unit, and I see maybe Kristin Gets wants to elaborate.
Yeah, just for a little bit of clarity, these parcels are zoned residential low, so theoretically under state law now, they could have two single-family homes and an accessory dwelling unit. The property owner is not proposing at this point in time anyway to develop that many units on each of the parcels. He is just looking at doing one single-family home and one accessory dwelling unit, and I think some of the commenters may have been concerned, you know, maybe that they were going to do duplexes or something like that, but theoretically, a duplex is not allowed.
Okay, and so.
I'm sorry, I just want to comment on Mr. Bodie. Mr. Bodie was here earlier, and there must have been miscommunication because he, I think he thought that we were canceling the meeting with the break that happened, so.
When we said we were taking.
He was here.
Oh, no. Okay, so I'm just curious, so with the ADUs, they're detached, right?
No, they're attached.
They're attached, and are they going to be side by side or in the back?
It's my understanding that the ADUs are going to be above the garages.
Above the garages, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Castellano.
I'm trying to refresh my memory here. Are there, when, when folks add on ADUs and this kind of development, are there limits to doing like vacation rentals on the property?
Yes, any accessory dwelling unit that gets a certificate of occupants after January 1st, 2020 cannot be used as a vacation rental. So yeah, these would not be able to be used as a vacation rental, the ADUs.
Thanks.
Councilmember Royal.
So I also saw that some of the concerns about the location pertain to traffic and, yeah, walkability in the neighborhood, and, you know, an increase in units perhaps leading to more traffic. Just kind of looking at the street view of this, it looks like there are not sidewalks on both sides of the road. Are there any conditions related to development of the property around sidewalk development? I can't remember whether that's required, honestly. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, sorry about that. There is a sidewalk on the other side of the, the subdivisions, and the reason, so now it, it's, so Public Works Engineering did not require sidewalks for the, especially the subdivision, that's the corner lot, because the other lots, a part of that four-lot subdivision, they were not required to have sidewalk because that whole side of the street, so boat, the, the ponderosa court going up there does not have a sidewalk on that southern side, on the same side as the subdivision, but there is a sidewalk on the other side of the street.
So when, I realize this is about the subdivision and not about the development itself, but when that development is proposed, is there the opportunity to consider things like, I mean, I realize it's principally permitted, so it's probably, the answer's probably no, but would there be any opportunity to require, to require traffic calming or anything like that?
I don't think so. I mean, if it's, if, I think if the council required that he put in sidewalks, maybe that could happen. I think I would need Kristin Gets, if you want to elaborate, but as of right now, if engineering did not ask for traffic calming or, or sidewalks, then, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll let Kristin elaborate.
Yeah, Caitlin is correct, or, excuse me, Senior Planner Castellano was correct. There was no requirement from Public Works for them to install sidewalks or traffic calming or anything like that for this particular project. When the plans do come forward for development of the individual sites, Public Works may have an opportunity at that point in time to look at public improvement requirements, but as of right now, they are not required, and the applicant is not, the developer is not anticipating having to install those or pay for those.
Okay, thank you. I, I think as I was asking my question, I sort of answered it as it was going, but thank you for, for clarifying that, that's very helpful.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I will go to the audience and see if there's any public comment on this item. None, okay, I will bring it back for a motion or discussion. Councilmember Braga.
Well, I think in the situation we're in that more housing is, is good. That's kind of where we're at. So I suppose if no one else wants to make it, anybody else? I feel like I've made a lot of motions tonight.
Oh, is it, I just, we don't have to do anything, right?
Oh, well, there you go.
That would be our.
Correct.
So, but we have, so is there, is there a vote on not doing anything, or do we just do consensus and see if everybody's okay with that? What's the process?
Thumbs up, thumbs down.
I move that we receive the port, report.
Okay, and take no further action.
And take no further action.
I'll second.
All right, everybody vote. That got complicated for the end, I was like, I don't know how to not do anything.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so now we are moving on to item J, future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they want to bring up for future agenda item? Councilmember Royal.
I, we had talked about this before, but I just wanted to get a status update on when we might be seeing a traffic information report, and specifically like injuries and fatalities, not just where's their traffic.
So it's going to be going to Traffic and Safety Commission in March, and so I believe it'll be the first meeting in April, we may be able to hit the second meeting in, as Public Works Director Irving shook his head, it, it could be either the 15th of March or the first meeting in April.
Thank you very much for that update.
That was an enthusiastic head nod, so I'm saying the 15th of March. I'll be back for that meeting. It's already on the agenda, is everybody okay with that? Or already on the plan? Right on. The, anybody, anything else that we need to discuss on this item? We can just move on to city manager reports? All right. I will go ahead and invite you to introduce it. Mr. City Manager Slattery.
Thank you, Mayor Seaman, and good evening again, mayor and council. So tonight, we have Project Manager Prasker to provide an update on the extensive work that Community Services Department has done at Carson Park. I will preface this with saying that this is a really good example of using all the resources you can and partnering with as many people as you can, and having a very robust public input process to find out what the community wants at a particular park. So Project Manager Prasker is here, and everybody wave to Donna because hopefully she's watching this, but she's at home with a tooth, excuse me, Community Service, Community Services Director Wood is at home with a, a very bad tooth problem, but she'll be better. Thank you, Robin. Excuse me, Project Manager Prasker.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and share a screen. Okay, can you see a PowerPoint?
We can, it's not on a, the slideshow yet, there it is.
Perfect. All right, when you have two screens, you got to be careful. Okay. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Robin Prasker, Environmental Project Manager with the Community Services Department, and tonight we are reporting on Carson Park. It is located off H and Boone Street and approximately 3.3 acres big. This beautiful park has hosted so many community events and summer camps over the years, and would really benefit from some upgrades and modernized amenities, and I'm sure the neighbors wouldn't mind as well. The park has been ineligible for most grants due to the median income being too high to qualify for a lot of the opportunities that are out there. This is always a challenge of staff being unable to seek grants when we have these beloved public spaces in such need of attention, but as Miles, or Mr. Slattery alluded to, community partners are key. So we've had many small successes with our community partner Rotary Club of Old Town Eureka. We've done some incremental improvements due to their fundraising efforts over the past few years. So we have new outdoor hydration station, which has a bottle filler, there's new entrances, soccer goals, refurbished picnic tables, and a resurfaced basketball court with new hoops. The restroom at the park has been identified by the Rotary Club of Old Town Eureka as a priority project. They've been fundraising to upgrade it. Since this project would potentially tear down the existing building, a survey was launched in October 2021 to engage the community about their park and what its future might be. The survey was very successful with 516 responses. We take the word, getting the word out very seriously, and we always go above and beyond to engage the community. We had physical flyers in both English and Spanish, as well as the, the survey itself was available in Spanish. We posted those all around the park, the immediate and greater neighborhoods, including notable flyer locations around town. We utilize all of our social media platforms, our department's direct email list that I think is up to 5,000 now, our monthly city newsletter, radio PSAs, and directly reaching out to local community groups and organizations. As you can see here, we have been building a local list of groups that we directly reach out to, and we have opportunities like the Carson survey. So moving on to the highlights of the survey, the playground, we've heard many concerns over the years about the state of the playground and the desire to upgrade it, and the survey helped us hone in on what exactly a new playground could look like. Most people preferred natural materials and an inclusive design with swings being the most popular play element. Respondents overwhelmingly wanted to see more community events at the park and amenities to support such activities. The top three sports that folks wanted to play at the park were basketball, pickleball... The top three sports that folks wanted to play at the park were basketball, pickleball, and soccer. A majority of respondents wanted a covered seating and picnic area for inclement weather. And a majority of respondents were in favor of an enclosed dog run. So with the public input in hand, staff have been able to create a park renovation scope and seek funding uh, with project partners, including the City of Eureka, Old Town Rotary as the lead Rotary uh, sponsor in partnership with Southwest Rotary of Eureka and Rotary Club of Eureka, and Steve and Tina Strombeck. We do have some foundational funding, but we are still looking for support. Okay, let's get into the proposed design that we have here for you tonight. Um, here is an aerial shot of the park just to orient us. We do have 14 parks, so sometimes we get confused. Uh, so moving on to the proposed design, this is just conceptual. And you can see the general orientation of the park uh, does not change mon- much. The beloved multi-use field will remain and receive irrigation upgrades. A small strip along the east of the field will become an enclosed dog run. We know many treat the field at Carson Park as an unofficial dog park, which can be problematic for a lot of reasons. Um, so allowing somewhere enclosed and controlled where they are allowed to be is a win-win for dog owners and field users alike. Uh, this park will also be Eureka's first outdoor pickleball courts in a city park. Uh, we've been hearing the feedback for years from the pickleball community about this deficit. We are very excited to offer tournaments, which will be an economic and tourism draw along with serving the expansive and quickly growing network of our local pickleball players. Um, and as well, the basketball court will just be reoriented and upgraded to um, account for the reorientation of things. Okay, restroom. The existing restroom and storage building will be removed. As in the survey, there was no majority that was concerned about keeping it. Also, um, upon inspection, the wood is severely damaged and ADA compliance would be very difficult to comply with. The new restroom concession storage building will be built to match the neighborhood aesthetic and feature a covered awning for picnics and events, including a rentable concession stand. The playground is currently undergoing some design and cost estimating, um, but these are some images we wanted to share of equipment we're considering. Uh, the rubenia wood featured here is a nice natural material and we are happy with the new install of this product at the Sequoia Park Phase One Playground. We also are loving the new customized um, swing seat options that are on the market. Uh, the nest swing is at Sequoia Park and pictured here, um, and it's kind of like the new tire swing of today's age. Um, also, there are seats where kids and parents can face each other while they swing. Um, and then of course, inclusiveness and ADA access is very important, so features like ramps or being able to directly roll on into a piece is very important. And of course, incorporating art is very important. We can do this through sculpt- sculptural play elements which can provide personality and color and educational components. Um, here we have some sketches of a caterpillar which could show the butterfly lifecycle that was provided by local artist Ben Coolart. Um, so it's just fun to kind of start making a vision design board of, of what direction this could go. Okay, last slide here, um, potential parking improvements with increased visitorship expected with these improvements, ample parking is important. We have the potential to make some modifications to Carson Street to create designated parking and increase safe flow of traffic. This project will also perfectly complement the future H and I improvements, which will also create additional and safer parking around the park. And that is all I have for tonight, um, but myself and Deputy Director Ray Me are both here to answer questions.
All right, does anybody have questions? Councilmember Royal.
Do you have a sense yet of what the um, budget, um, I don't know how to say shortfall, but what, how much money do you need?
Sorry, my mouse disappeared. Um, yeah, you know, at this point in time, we don't know, that's actually our next step. Um, so after we kind of gauge um, all of you here tonight and the community about this project, if it seems like this is in line with the community's vision, then we would be able to then finalize the design and get those cost estimates, so. Um, that is basically our next step after tonight if we can move forward.
All right, Councilmember Bauer.
That was my question as well. How much money do we need? It's a great project. Uh, I don't think anybody can deny that, and that park, it's been needing upgrades for years, so, great job. And um, hopefully we can figure out what we need and keep it going. Thanks.
Right on. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Burgele.
So I just wanted to say thanks so much. I love the new play structures that you're considering. I love that natural wood at um, Sequoia Park. And I love that you're, it's going to be more expansive and a lot more to do, and there's not going to be, there's going to be the dog run because sometimes, like, I've run in that park and it can be problematic at best, so it'll be nice to have that kind of taken care of. So I look forward to you getting us, getting back to us with an amount, and um, we'll just get and go from there. And Donna, I hope you feel better.
All right, well, thank you. We are, I, I think we're all very excited about this and all of the other parks projects. You guys are staying busy in all the best ways, so, that's great. City Manager Slattery, anything else?
That is all I have, thank you.
All right, well, I think that that means we are moving on to um, council member reports. So let's go ahead and start with Councilmember Castellano.
Sure, uh, I don't have too much to report um, outside of attending council-related meetings, but I have continued to facilitate a housing working group on Mondays and yeah, just doing all the other projects in the community. Oh, and I wanted to appreciate uh, Councilmember Bauer for the work around Cooper Gulch and the um, removal of invasive species. I wasn't able to attend because I had a conflict, but I was, I ran into some people who had been and they were so stoked that it was happening and they felt really proud of their experience there, so thank you.
Councilmember Moulton.
Thank you. Uh, as Mayor Seaman mentioned earlier, I attended the Eureka City Schools Two by Two. Um, and lots of great stuff, wonderful improvements happening in the schools. Uh, thank you for shouting out for the technical uh, education programs that are going on at ECS. Apparently they are underutilized, so if you're missing that in your educational life, definitely get involved. Um, there's nothing definitive happening yet at the Jacobs Campus, but there is incremental progress. One, one more step has been taken in a very long road. Um, and I'm glad to be a part of these conversations and help get the opinions of the folks in the second ward in the room when it comes to um, what Eureka City Schools plans to do with their parcel, which is the Jacobs Campus. If anybody else wants to talk about that, you can always just get ahold of me and I can take your thoughts to the table with me. Um, I think that's pretty much it. I just wanted to, on a, on a personal note, in honor of Black History Month, I wanted to acknowledge a mentor of mine who, there's absolutely no chance at all that she's watching this, but um, we mentioned, uh, I wanted to acknowledge Anjari Shakur, who is an activist against the death penalty and police brutality in Houston, and I worked with her for many years. And she taught me a lot about um, how everyone can work towards equality in their everyday life and even nerdy white girls from the suburbs, and I just encourage everybody to um, acknowledge the contributions of all Black Americans and work in your daily, every day to try and make sure that equality is something that you are growing in your own little bitty circles which grow out into our community, which will grow out into the country and the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Royal.
Well, um, I wanted to acknowledge and share with all of you that the project uh, pertaining to this transit hub is um, you know, this was, the, the last Humboldt Transit Authority meeting, we talked about this, but um, I know you all were not there. So I will share with you that, that project, if the grant is received, will be more, more than the transit hub. It will also include um, quite a lot of alternative fuel um, infrastructure to prepare us for the requirements that we will have in place very soon to have um, uh, non-gasoline powered buses, so we have an electric bus, but we'll also have um, hydrogen powered buses and fueling. Um, and so to prepare for that requirement, that grant will also cover a lot of those upgrades. Um, so there's a lot more to that grant that if it's received, um, will be pretty cool for our community and um, result in a lot of uh, infrastructure projects and hopefully a lot of economic vitality for the area as well. So um, that is still to be determined, the outcome of that, but I'll be sure to report back and let you know. Um, let's see, I'm working, it, it's a little early to like, report out exactly what will happen from this, but I'm excited about working with um, folks in the native arts community to hopefully designate uh, future opportunities, like specifically for native artists in the City of Eureka. Um, and we're exploring a few avenues for that, and it's really been exciting work so far with a lot of leaders in the community, so I, I'm excited to be working on that and to like proactively say, yes, we want to include this vision in our, our arts, um, you know, strategic planning and our economic development and our support for community, so. Look for more exciting news coming from that realm soon, um, and what that looks like uh, has yet to fully pan out. Um, I think that is all that I need to report besides the usual meetings, of which there are so many, so I'll pass, pass it here.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer.
Thank you. Yeah, I think uh, one of the highlights of the many meetings that I've had to attend is uh, CalCity. So I represent uh, CalCity's on Government Affairs or Government Transparency Labor Relations Committee, and that's 64 other uh, city council people across the state. It's this giant, amazing screen of a million people, and um, so there's be a lot of legislation coming. Um, it's really February, it's all rolling out, and um, I expect to be bringing stuff back to, to us to talk about in the future. But it's really interesting to see, big city, small city, we all have the same problems, same issues, same government problems, Public Records Act requests that are unending, as uh, some of us know. Um, so, really kind of an exciting thing to be a part of, a little unwieldy having so many people, but all, a lot of cool people out there and fun to work with. And then um, Cooper Gulch, we'd had a great event. Thank you, Project Manager uh, Prasker for helping out with that. Um, we had a little over 20 people show up. Um, we filled one giant dumpster and didn't even put a dent in the invasive species in the park. Um, but we had three or four Eureka High students come, um, which was great, and just a lot of, a lot of community members that got, it was hot and, you know, we, we made the 11th Street um, a trail look really good, but I hope to do it once a month maybe, you know, or once every other month, because we could do it forever in that park to, to, to improve habitat and make it a better place, and um, it was a lot of fun and um, appreciated all of the community members that came out and, and supported it, and hopefully we can have bigger ones, and uh, hopefully an Earth Day thing is um, Project Manager Prasker and I were kind of talking about doing something cool out there, you know, for Earth Day, so. Yeah, it was a great time. Thank you.
Very cool. Councilmember Burgele.
Well, let's see, I have a couple things. Um, so I missed the zoo meeting because we had a council meeting that night, so I just, I want to read um, some of the updates that um, were sent to me. So, this is from Jim, who's the uh, he's the main man over there now. So we are finally breaking, we are finally breaking ground on the bear and coyote exhibit, which is awesome. This week, construction crews will begin to mobilize this onsite to start the process of building our exciting new exhibit, and it's what's so cool about this exhibit, you guys, is that it looks over the bears, so you're up on the skywalk and you can look down and see the bear, I mean, it's just so awesome. Um, let's see, the Redwood Skywalk just had its annual tree examin', completed by Scott Baker and staff from Tree Solutions, um, and there'll be a comprehensive report coming out for that. And there's just some fun news, our new zoo member Pocket, the Virginia Opossum, she's doing really well. She's full of personality. If you haven't met her yet, she's super cute. And then um, Darcy, the, or Dorsey, the um, porcupine is doing so much better now, and she's, so that's kind of awesome too. So that's some updates from the zoo, which I love our zoo, as you know. Um, the other thing that I got to do um, was I got to attend the Two by Two County Meeting. Um, and this is the cool part, I was the only one there, so nobody else came, and I got to meet with DHHS about Laura's Law. And I'm really excited that we're going to have one more tool in our toolbox to work with homeless folks. Um, the gift in that is I had some, some concerns about Laura's Law. I thought that that was forced medication, and that really is a slippery slope. Um, but come to find out that it's not forced medication, um, it's a lot more of um, having somebody kind of oversee what's going on with you, that type of thing, uh, with a nudge from the judge to do better. And um, and the cool thing that I realized or I learned was that, you know, you can report anybody, so if you have a family member that you feel like is having a mental health crisis and they don't feel that they are, you can contact DHHS and get them assessed, which is pretty, pretty awesome. Um, and the law was put together because there were three murders from someone that, from three different people that were not taking their medication and for whatever reason ended up um, hurting people. So, it's an important thing, it's going to be another important tool for our toolbox, so I'm really excited about that. It's just a pilot program to start with, but um, and we'll see how it works. You know, it may help three or four people, but that's three or four people that may be off our streets, and um, we need all the tools in the toolbox we can possibly get. Um, and then lastly, I'm, I just, I'm so excited about this other project that um, Councilmember Bauer and I've been working on, and um, there's an environmental cleanup happening right now over by Kinko's, and it's a private property owner, but we've been working really hard to work with this property owner to get all of that toxic, disgusting mess out of there. And today was the first day, John Shelter was in there for four hours and did a lot of tree, tree limbing and those types of things, so um, we're going to see a lot of progress there, and any of you, Leslie, you might have been there for a cleanup before, I mean, it was just, it, well, I can't say the, a word without saying an expletive, so um, we'll just leave that there. And uh, just know that good things are happening in our city and it's really exciting to be a part of all that. That's all.
Very cool. You know, my daughter submitted the name Pocket for the marsupial, because, yeah, because she said it was a marsupial, so they have pockets. I haven't yet, so I'm going to get down there. And with that, we will adjourn, see y'all in two weeks.